You good, Susan? Okay. Um, yeah. We're ready.
Good morning and welcome to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors' regular meeting for Tuesday, August 22nd, 2023. If you can, please rise for the pledge to our class.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, I have a couple announcements this morning. Supervisor Follendorf will be joining us via Zoom. And Supervisor Follendorf, is there any members of the public there with you?
No.
Okay, so there are no public members there. Okay, the second is if you're here for item number 21, a SEPEG TV item, it has been pulled by staff and will be brought back to us at a later meeting. With that, we'll move on to staff announcements. This is time for county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public. Are there any staff announcements?
Good morning. I'm Chair Boda Supps. Mike Missoni, Director, Calaveras, OES. Just wanted to remind the public and all of you that we have a disaster loan outreach center that will take place beginning 8/23, so the 23rd through the 25th, 9:00 to 5:00 p.m. at San Andreas Library. And this is, the Small Business Administration is putting this on in conjunction with OES as a result and a benefit of the DR 4699 resolution that we'll be discussing later on this afternoon as well. So those two events will be occurring on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and then culminating on Saturday, August 26th, we have a California Disaster Resource Fair. That's going to be here at the Government Center, 891 Mountain Ranch Road from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. A number of agencies and entities will be there, including the Small Business Administration, USDA, Cal OES, DMV, American Red Cross, Habitat for Humanity, Catholic Charities, California Southern Baptist Disaster Convention, Calaveras County Planning, Building Assessors, Public Health, Behavioral Health, Economic and Community Development, and the library. And culminating with the San Andreas Fire Department will be there as well with apparatus and equipment for the kids and a report.
Thank you. Any other staff announcements this morning? Then in the room, is there any online?
There is none online.
All right. Move on to the next item, which is general public comments. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter and jurisdiction of the Board and is not posted on the consent or regular agenda may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the Board from taking any action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the Board may immediately move on to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard. So, general public comments. Mr. Brock, good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Board, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I am Matt Brock from San Andreas, going to address two issues directly impacting San Andreas and Calaveras County in my allotted time. First, I want to address how relaxed highway parking laws are impacting St. Charles Street in San Andreas. One year ago, we had zero RVs occupied by transients regularly parking on the streets of San Andreas. Six months ago, we had an average of one RV parking on the streets of San Andreas. Today, we have two parking on the streets, two RVs occupied by transients. At any time, there will be other transients lording around these RVs, and that has created a safety issue for our residents and visitors. Citizens attempting to visit one of our most popular local restaurants have to park amongst the transients. On one occasion, a local probationer was using illicit narcotics in the restroom of this restaurant. After leaving his fentanyl-smoking apparatus on the sink of the restaurant, he stumbled out the RV parked just south on St. Charles Street. Ten minutes later, here comes one of my son's classmates walking right by the RV and lording the transients outside. Daily, our student athletes are subject to this scene as they attempt to run cross-country through town. A few months back, one of my student athletes was bitten by a transients dog. He had to receive medical treatment and injections at Mark Twain Center, Mark Twain Health Center. We're looking to you as our leaders to find a solution to this problem. I've spoken with several CHP officers who told me, since there are no parking restrictions on the highway, there's nothing they can do. And I asked them, if there were signs limiting parking to two or three hours with an exception placard for residents and merchants, would you be able to enforce that? And they said, yes, they could. When you travel to affluent areas, you will see such signs along state highways, in particular areas like Santa Cruz where RV parking has been effectively controlled. I believe all the people who live in and visit San Andreas would appreciate this work if this work was done on our behalf. Otherwise, what do we have to look forward to? Continued exponential increases of transient RVs. Who in their right mind would want to move their family to our town? With RVs parked along the highway, people are trying to escape that when they come visit us. Regarding the narcotics trafficking that goes along with the RV, transient RV parking, I know our sheriff's office is so shorthanded that surveillance is not an option for them at this time. Public safety is like any other labor market in our country. The market ebbs and flows with the economy, and right now, the tide is in favor of labor. In these days of hyperinflation, $300 to $400 more on a paycheck means the difference between living in an apartment or buying your first home. And we have to compete with and beat our neighboring agencies. We need to make tough decisions, put public safety first. Members of the DSA need to be rewarded for their tireless work, and they're doing their best to keep our county safe. Thank you.
Absolutely. Come on in.
Hello, my name is Mitchell. I was here just over a month ago for the first time. Tried to ask some questions, and I was censored out. I was asked to go out into the hallway. They took my information, was hoping that they would help me get to the answers of some of my questions. And my questions, I've been trying to, like, ask about, basically, like, codes, and I figured that would be public information. And if I try to go department-specific, there's one gentleman that's overly rude, will get loud, and that was a one time to my face. And, and then if I try to, like, call or email, then they'll, they'll respond. The staff will respond that they're not allowed to speak with me. And I've asked that, you know, I'm starting to write names down. I've asked, you know, that particular, you know, that particular woman, am I, am I, have I ever been rude to you, or am I being rude now? And she's, oh, no, you're not being rude. You've never been rude. But my supervisor's telling me to not speak with you. I don't know what the, what the problem is. If I'm just trying to ask what some of the rules are for department-specific or, you know, or code rules, I don't know why they would not want to answer that. I don't see the big deal. And I am glad to see a lot of the, the, the police officers, you know, the sheriff and the Cal fires here, you know, because, yeah, a lot of stuff, it is, it's code enforcement. You know, it's safety for the community, kind of like what the other gentleman's talking about with the, you know, and I sent, you know, you those pictures yesterday, Jack, of the, all those abandoned vehicles there in West Point. They're really piling up. It looks like they've recently removed two, but it's like they're popping up faster than you guys removing them because they're sitting, on average, eight to 10 months. And then, yeah, someone, you know, I don't, it definitely wasn't me, but someone has painted all over that one vehicle. I sent you the pictures. And in that particular house right there, that's been an ongoing problem with the, with the county. People call it the bicycle house. It's just, I don't know. But I really wish that the, that the county would help me, you know, I don't know, I am, I'm really, like, disappointed with not helping me, you know, get to the bottom of what a code is. You know, like, I don't know what the problem is. If I go to department-specific, you know, some of the departments, they're nice, you know, they'll help you. You know, it's like, no big deal, you know, you know, and if they're busy, you know, maybe you have to, like, wait or come back or something like that would be reasonable. But just to, like, tell me that they're not gonna, not gonna answer the question, I don't know. All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Christopher Bunnor. I'll be reading from a prepared statement. This morning at 8:55 a.m., I emailed a Public Records Act request to Calaveras County Council, Sarah Edwards. To enter it into the public records of this meeting, I will now read it aloud to the Board of Supervisors. The county CEO and county council, on February 21st, 2023, the Calaveras Visitors Bureau, CBB, filed IRS 2021 Form 990 Schedule 0 detailing a significant change had occurred to its organizational documents in 2021 whereby its legal status changed from a 501(c)(6) public benefit corporation nonprofit entity to a 501(c)(6) mutual benefit corporation nonprofit entity, effective upon recordation of amended articles of incorporation on July 12th, 2021. CBB's request for approval from the Department of Justice had been granted two months earlier on May 20th, 2021. The California Public Records Act request is for the Office of Calaveras County Council to produce responsive records of all writings pertaining to Calaveras County's administration having been notified in any manner, formally or informally, by the Calaveras Visitors Bureau of its switch in mid-2021 or at any time since of its nonprofit corporation type from a public benefit corporation nonprofit entity to a mutual benefit corporation nonprofit entity. My name is Christopher Bunnor. My website is calaveras2024election.com. Again, that's calaveras2024election.com. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Scott Wetzmauler. I'm a resident of San Andreas. Myself and many other residents are very concerned with the homeless population and the three, two to three motorhomes and several other vehicles parking on the roads and streets around town. We have children walking past these motorhomes, going to and from school every day. We also have the boys in the track team that have to run past these said vehicles, as well as residents, and what tourists we get. I've seen many of these cars and motorhomes parked in front of local businesses, blocking their entries, causing them to lose customers. I've seen many of these different people go into the blue motorhome, come out, sit on the curb, and smoke dope in front of these children, residents, tourists, and general public. I've also seen a light truck with a light utility box trailer, where he lives out of the trailer, has a dog, and when he leaves, there's dog droppings all over the sidewalk and street. They don't clean it up. You also had people, you can't go to Turner Park without running to some of these people wanting, trying to camp down there. You also had people out on Pole Station Road in our cemeteries starting fires, and then they don't get cited because they're saying they're warming fires. So, I would like to recommend the Board of Supervisors come up with an ordinance or to reach out to Caltrans or the state and possibly get signs put up stating overnight parking, two-hour parking, to help curb this problem we're having. If we don't have your help in this matter, nothing's going to get done. It's only going to get worse and invite more people to start living in our streets. As a concerned citizen, I'd like you to possibly put this on the agenda so we have an avenue to go down and start addressing the situation. Thank you.
Hello, Board. I'm Kate Allen. I'm the president of the San Andreas Merchants Association. I'm also here today to talk about the problem of RVs on Highway 49, which is essentially the main street, the active main street of San Andreas. I would like you guys to, to put this item on a future agenda so that we can start to resolve the issue. We've been told by the Sheriff's Department that the California Right to Rest Law makes dealing with this issue particularly tricky. However, there must be a solution, and I believe that this is an urgent problem. It's become a blight in San Andreas that is affecting our businesses and our merchants, the quality of life of our residents, a feeling of safety in our community. And it can't be something that is ignored or allowed to set a precedent. We really don't want the county seat of Calaveras County to look like another frontage road in Lodi, Stockton, or Sacramento where one RV turns into two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, down, which is the corridor of the entrance to the county seat. I'm sure everybody or most people that are in this room today drove by the RVs that are parked on Highway 49. And I think it's an embarrassment to San Andreas. I think it's an embarrassment to Calaveras County, and it has to be addressed. I would like the Board to direct Public Works to work with Caltrans to find a solution and figure this out. I know that Melissa Ragio from the Calaveras Council of Governments has reached out to Caltrans regarding additional two-hour parking through the Highway 49 corridor. I'm asking the Board to direct Public Works to follow up on that and find a solution and find it quick because it's becoming a growing problem, and it's not going to go away. It's a part of the state of California now. Everybody's dealing with this. We have to stay ahead of it, or it's going to become a problem that San Andreas can't get out from under. So, please put it on a future agenda item. Please direct Public Works to follow up with Caltrans. Please look into two-hour parking signs for Highway 49. It can't be from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. It has to be, that's not going to deter overnight camping, so that change has to be made. There's already two-hour parking signs on certain sections on one block, but they say 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., so it's not deterring overnight camping. We need to figure this out. If the two-hour parking limit is not the direction that's going to solve the problem, then maybe we appeal to Health and Human Services or our Housing Department to figure out a way to find an appropriate place for people if they want to live out of an RV in a trailer park or somewhere where that is the appropriate place to do it. But on Highway 49, which is St. Charles and is actively our main street, it's not okay. And we're asking for your help on behalf of the San Andreas Merchants. Thank you so much.
My issue's a little different.
Hello, my name is Christine Albertine, and I would like to speak on the issue of staffing for animal services. I hope we can all agree that reliance is on volunteers to fully staff the animal shelter is not going to work. I also hope we can agree that additional full-time permanent staff is necessary to fulfill the mission of the animal shelter and to help insurers run in a competent and responsible manner. County Ordinance Section 6.04.060 states that the Board by resolution may establish an advisory committee to serve at the pleasure of the Board for the purposes of making recommendations for the betterment of the animal control program. Such a committee comprised of people from a variety of backgrounds may be able to propose remedies for the staffing issues as well as any other issue the Board would like the advisory committee to look into. Even if this does not happen, I have several ideas that may aid in easing of the tremendous burden that is placed upon the current staff and volunteers. You may have already considered these, or you have something in place. In my previous occupation, we utilized the following options and found that they were very effective. Option one is interns. By setting up a program with the local high school and possibly Columbia College, an intern can handle various job functions that are needed to ensure animal shelters run in a safe and effective manner. These students can acquire skills that they can use in later life and at the same time alleviate some of the burden on the staff and volunteers, the animals and the kids. The animals would certainly benefit from the additional attention. These students may even be able to obtain credit for the work they perform for the county. The second option we used was PIs. And I, one of our union contracts was proposal for the permanent intermittent appointments for PIs. And briefly, the number of hours and work schedule is determined by operational need. We did permit refusal to accept a position, but after the fourth labor, we subject them to a nonpunitive termination. I certainly won't get into the minutia of it, but how the program worked, this time, I'd be here for all day. And the third option is ROEs. Another provision in the union contract dealt with retired adolescents. By utilizing retired adolescents, you take advantage of their work experience, and you don't have to pay retirement benefits. The management rights position in each of your MOEs you have, the different unions, allows you the options to find solutions for the current staffing issues. So after all, you are only limited by your imagination. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Amber McConan. I'm a San Andreas resident, voting taxpaying citizen over on Pope Street. So I'm here to talk about Echo, definitely, the RVs. It's not just Highway 49 that they are frequenting. It's the neighborhood streets as well. They are actively on a circuit to keep moving so that they avoid suspicion, which is hilarious because when you're driving around in an RV, it's pretty inconspicuous, you know. I definitely, and I would, will go on record as a witness for this, seen young women, young women being dropped off from that RV and then several hours later picked up. So, I'll let you put together what's going on there. On my street, in front of my house, that I came here to raise children, and my husband and I have been trying to move our business here. Our property has been hit by cars twice within this year that have been speeding through Pope Street, lost control, drivers, whatever they may be. I really want to do it with the microphone, I know. I am asking for signage on Highway 49 to the effect that's already been spoken to. I'm also asking for reconsideration on, wouldn't even know where to stop, on Pope and Treat, and possibly some signage to the effect of that there's an active neighborhood watch to deter some of the crime that's, that's recently, I'll say exploded in that area. I'm happy to participate. I'm a stay-at-home mom, very interested in the safety of this community. Thank you very much.
Since it was the law brigade, I thought I'd, I'd just jump on that train. So, I don't want to sound like a broken record, and so many did eloquent jobs of speaking about this, but I actually own the properties, and my family's business is the one that's been affected with the fentanyl in the bathrooms. And I own the property across the street where my 76-year-old mother lives. And I have witnessed them selling, I have sat at that property and witnessed them selling, I don't know what they're selling, but they're selling something out of those trailers, and they're constantly parked in front of that property. We can't see to get out. It's a huge issue. It really is. Where, I mean, that, both of those businesses are being affected every single day. It's a huge issue. So I just wanted to sort of reiterate that I am the property owner that is being directly affected, both business and, one is, you know, it's a commercial, but it's a, it's a residence at this point. And safety has been a huge concern. We are very concerned about my mother living there by herself at this point and have talked about her not staying there anymore because we're very upset about the activity that is going on down there. And allowing our children to be in our restaurant, I mean, we can't even, you know, they'll come in and try to use the, the facilities there. But that's it. I don't want to be a broken record, so, you know.
I think a lot of us are here for that issue, though, so we would just love your help. And, you know, we're here to do whatever we need to do to, to be helpful and put signs up or whatever. But I don't have an answer for that, so, but I'll do all the things.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Well, Board, my name is Michael Bay. I'm a member of San Andreas. About 18 months ago, I took it upon myself to start doing morning walks. And in the next last 18 months, the reason why you don't see much trash in this town is because I have an intimate knowledge of walking every street. Did it this morning. I usually pick up about three bags. I've also personally dismantled and removed maybe 20 encampments during my 18 months. I walk over, I see a bunch of trash. It's spread out everywhere. I wait, I go and grab it, pull my truck up, load it up, out the door. Behind Kelly's, which is now Penny Pincher's, all the underpasses out of the parks, starting Turner, Nielsen, by Hertz, also by, down on Pixley. Occasionally, a few times, if I happen to go underneath there, I've been confronted. So now I sit there and pack anytime I go underneath there. I've been accosted one time. It's amazing what a piece will do to back them off. It's true. Also, I have intimate knowledge. I've spoken with some homeless. We roughly have about 30 homeless in our town, according to this individual. About 28 of them are couch surfing at this time, two are on the streets. I could remove the RVs, but I'm not strong enough. It's like, that's where it stops. That's where you guys are at this point in time. Now, I'm but one person making a difference. There's also one person on Main Street named Jim. Many people know him. He's basically turned around Main Street with just his business, and you guys probably know who he is. Got plenty of boxes out there. Main Street is different. On the corner where that park is, next to Foley's, it's now got a drinking fountain on there that hasn't been there in God knows how long. Both Jim and myself did that. We didn't come to the Board. We didn't go to the county. We just said, go get the piece. Matt hooked us up with the plumber, and we got it done in about an hour and a half. Now there's a drinking fountain. There's a guy that came up and says, I haven't seen that drinking fountain work since I was a kid. All right, so, we're not going to wait around. There's one individual that's down in Nielsen Park, one person doing the work. No one else. All right, so it shows the resolve that we have on this side of the table. We're looking for help on that side of the table. The same thing with the RVs. I'm not going to go over what they're doing, but it can get done. And if you guys want to help us, great. This is Plan A. I talked to Matt. I've got Plan B, Plan C, and Plan D. And he said, hey, man, hold off a second, give those guys a chance, let them work with us first. So that's what I'm going to do. We're going to let you guys work with us. We expect to see something. I don't want to have the, you know, pointing fingers. It's Caltrans' job. It's this person's job. There was one time, there was a dryer that sat down next to the VFW, next to BT Fitness, for three months, just sat there on the street. When you go to the county, hey, that's a Caltrans problem. We'll deal with Caltrans. What I would do is, if I'm the county, you know what? Let's do, Caltrans is solid. Let's go just pick it up, remove it, and then deal with them with the cog or whatever and say, what are you guys doing? But give us some help. I'm willing to wait, but I'm just one person, but I want to let you know that what one person can do can make significant changes, and we'd like to have all your guys' help.
Sir, your time is up, sir.
Yes, it is. Thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you. I would like to say one thing. If you have your, either you can turn your phones off, please, or you can leave them on, but put them to silence because there's several of them kind of going off or things going on. Noise is just irritating. So put them on silence and use them if you want, or turn them on. Okay, is there any other?
I'll just leave it there. I'm Dana Jorgensen. I'm a district representative for Senator Marie Alvarado Gill. And it was great to hear all the comments today. That's kind of one of the reasons why I'm here. I tend to go to my office and sit in front of the computer all day and play whack-a-mole with emails. So that could be scheduling, casework, all kinds of things. So I'm really glad to be here today. I'd much prefer to be out. I just wanted to greet Ms. Hitchcock. I haven't met you yet, and I'm glad that you're here. I've heard wonderful, wonderful things about you. And from our office, I wanted to offer going into next year to meet with, with you and the chair to just talk about some of the priorities for Calaveras County. And that specifically with the budget. I'm not going to get into that, but the state budget is probably going to be tough next year, but we're still looking for your priorities. So we'll have that conversation going forward. I want to address something that people brought up today that I know a little bit about, is the vehicles and the steel. Schnitzer Steel in Sacramento on 50 takes a lot of steel, and they pay you. I also had a vehicle was an Explorer. This is many years ago. It had two. I also had a vehicle, was an Explorer, this is many years ago, it had 280,000 miles on it, looked decent, but it was, the second transmission was going. I called a company, and this is not my brother-in-law, it's called AutoGator in Roseville, they came to Pine Grove, picked it up and gave us 800 bucks. So that's an opportunity for people, there might even be an opportunity for the county under your vehicle abatement where you can get those things off the road and, you know, get some funds to you. I know there's some legalities, people on their own property can do a lot of things with government, it's a little bit different, but just throwing that out there. Senator's going to be up here on September 22nd for the state of the county, we're going to be meeting with some other folks. And what else? We sent a letter to CCWD this morning in support of a grant that they're seeking. Senator and I were at the Farm Bureau on Sunday night at Bryce Station, their annual meeting, made a very good, nice meeting with folks up there. I wrote a lot of stuff down, I think that's, that's pretty much it. The gambit of stuff that I deal with is all over the place and my goal is to always, I like, I'm one of those weirdos, I've thought about government since I was 10 years old, so that's 43 years.
Your time is up.
So send me anything you want and I'll route you. Thanks. Nice to be here today, too.
I didn't mean to cut you short, you're the representative, this is public comment, period. Any other public comment?
Talking too much, my wife.
Mrs. Campbell.
Me too, Dana.
Good morning, Kathy Campbell, resident of San Andreas, and I'd like to say that I totally agree with Matt and the other town residents with the concerns. And I'd also like to say I agree with Christine, I'm a volunteer dog walker, and we love our volunteer efforts, but we also feel that sometimes we're being, not used, but accepted and part of the balance and the budget, so please look carefully at your staffing levels. But my main purpose here is to tell good news. And I'm a volunteer board member with Habitat for Humanity Calaveras, and right now, our annual hoedown for humanity auction is happening, it started Monday morning, yesterday morning, and it goes until Saturday evening at 8:00. Please check out habitatcalaveras.org, it's all online, the public's invited, and I'd like to give you a brochure on our home repair program, we have zero to low interest loans for homeowners in Calaveras County, and we're also excited, we'll be breaking ground shortly, hopefully, for our 107-unit workforce housing program for working Calaveras County families. So please visit habitatcalaveras.org and participate in our auction and raffle. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Robin, do we have anybody online?
There is none online.
Okay. We will close general public comment and move on to the next item on our agenda. This is the consent agenda. The consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial, they will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. Does there any board member wish to pull an item? Supervisor Hubbard?
Yes, Chair Toffenelli, I don't wish to pull the item, but I would like to recuse myself from item three. I am an employee of the Calaveras Visitors Bureau and to avoid any perception of conflict, I will recuse myself.
Okay. Any other board member wish to pull an item and make a comment? Seeing none, is there any staff member wish to pull an item? Seeing none, is there any member of the public wish to pull an item off the consent?
Item three, item six.
You'll have to come to the microphone to make that.
Item three, item six.
Three and six. All righty, done.
Item three, please.
Item three, so we have three and six. All right, we'll bring it back to the board. I'm open for a motion for the remainder of the consent, minus three and six.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Supervisor Stopper, a second by Supervisor Hubbard. Madam Clerk, can we please do a roll call vote?
Yes. Supervisor Stopper.
Aye.
Supervisor Hubbard.
Aye.
Supervisor Garamendi.
Aye.
Supervisor Follendorf.
Aye.
Chair Toffenelli.
Aye.
Thank you.
Passes five, zero. Go back to item number three, this is agreement with administrative office, authorize the board to execute an agreement with the Calaveras County Visitors Bureau for tourism promotion for the period of July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2026. Al, you specifically pulled it first, so do you want to make comments?
Yeah, I'm Sigal, the taxpaying association. Just some discussion, it's what's involved with the visitor's bureau, there's no mention of money, but I have suspicion, probably money and benefit. And so perhaps it should be a discussion item rather than a consent item. Thank you.
Any other comments on this item?
Item three.
Item three, yes.
Good morning, Supervisors, my name is Christopher Budner. I'm formally requesting the removal and continuance of agenda item three, Calaveras County Visitors Bureau Promotion Agreement from today's August 22nd, 2023 Board of Supervisors Meeting. I'll be reading a series of questions as my prepared statement. Why did the Calaveras Visitors Bureau switch its legal status from a nonprofit public benefit corporation to a nonprofit mutual benefit corporation in 2021? Who instigated this change of legal status from a nonprofit public benefit corporation to a nonprofit mutual benefit corporation at the Calaveras Visitors Bureau? And who in the county government was notified? On what date and by whom was the Calaveras County Government first notified of the Calaveras Visitors Bureau's switch from a nonprofit public benefit corporation to a nonprofit mutual benefit corporation in 2021? Who in the county government approved the continuation of transient occupancy tax funding for the Calaveras Visitors Bureau following the Bureau's change of legal status from a nonprofit public benefit corporation to a nonprofit mutual benefit corporation? Why did the county provide nearly $2 million in funding to the Calaveras Visitors Bureau for several years without a formal agreement and nearly financial accountability? Does the Calaveras County CEO and county council know that transient occupancy taxes are being allocated to a business bureau that is no longer a nonprofit public benefit corporation? Does the Calaveras County CEO and county council know that these transient occupancy tax dollars contributed to the Calaveras Visitors Bureau now legally belong to the members of a nonprofit mutual benefit corporation? Where is the publicly available roster of the members of this nonprofit mutual benefit corporation published? And who is the president of the Calaveras Visitors Bureau Board of Directors? Why is the Calaveras Visitors Bureau Tourism Promotion Agreement being established between Calaveras County and a non-existent California nonprofit public benefit corporation as explicitly stated in the Tourism Promotion Agreement dated July 1st, 2023? Does Calaveras County's administration recognize and understand the fundamental and significant legal distinctions between a nonprofit public benefit corporation and a nonprofit mutual benefit corporation? This is just the first of dozens of questions that you'll soon be answering publicly explaining to the citizens of Calaveras County how such legal and fiscal mismanagement occurs on your watch. I demand that the Board of Supervisors withhold any further action in voting on this matter today and instead schedule a public hearing regarding this four-year contract with the Calaveras Visitors Bureau to examine multiple substantiated citizen concerns. Thank you very much.
Is there any other comments on this item? Is there any online?
There is none online.
Okay, I will bring it back to the board. Supervisor Stopper.
Just reading through this, had a little conversation with council this morning about it earlier on. This is actually holding the Visitors Bureau accountable, so if we don't approve this right now, then we aren't giving clear direction on what we want from them and leaving them open to do what they want. So, you know, with that, and this spelling out what their responsibilities are to the county, and the county's responsibilities to them, I think it would give them more free for all, so I, I'm in support of this item. You know, world debate on may or shall on wording and everything is another thing, but that, yeah, with that, I'll, if everyone, no one else has anything to say, I'll make a motion in that manner to support this item.
Second.
Motion, a second, call for roll call, call vote.
Supervisor Follendorf.
Aye.
Chair Toffenelli.
Aye.
And Supervisor Hubbard is recused from voting. And Supervisor Stopper.
Aye.
Supervisor Garamendi.
Aye.
Thank you.
Passes four to zero with one abstence. We'll move on to item number six, which was ruled, this agreement with behavioral health, authorize the board chair to execute amendment 01 to the agreement with Central Star Behavioral Health Incorporated for operation of a crisis residential unit for the period of June 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2023 in an amount not to exceed $668,000. And two, authorize the Director of Health and Human Services Agency to make modifications to the agreement so long as they do not affect the not to exceed amount and approvals are provided by risk management, county council, and administration. Sir, you pulled this? Oh, Al, you pulled this?
Yes, thank you. We have from two, uh, rehab centers that I know about in our county, that are probably doing pretty well. And my question on this is, can we have some discussion about this item as to how it compares with what's available for facilities to help people?
Is there any other comments? Any online?
No, there is not.
Wendy, you want to address?
Good morning, Wendy, behavioral health. I'll just give you a little bit of information, so the Central Star is actually a crisis residential unit, so that's not necessarily substance abuse. This is where an individual can go to be on a voluntary hold where they're not placed on a psychiatric hold of 5150. So this is a place where they can go and get help and we do not have any facility like that in Calaveras County. And it doesn't come from general fund either, it's a Medi-Cal facility as well.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll bring it back to the board, I'm open for a motion.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Supervisor Stopper, second by Supervisor Garamendi. Robin, can we do a roll call?
So Supervisor Stopper.
Aye.
Supervisor Garamendi.
Aye.
Supervisor Hubbard.
Aye.
Supervisor Follendorf.
Aye.
Chair Toffenelli.
Aye.
Thank you.
Passes five, zero. We're going to move on to our regular agenda, item number 17, we're going to take a few-minute break so we can get set up. Okay, a five-minute break. All right, we are back and we're going to move on to the regular agenda, it's item number 17, this is an informational item from administrative office to receive an informational presentation regarding the function of the Regional Council of Rural Counties. Ms. Barbara Hayes, you are up.
Thank you, and thank you, everyone, good morning, thank you for having me. I will say, I'm here to represent Rural County Representatives of California, it's an organization that's been around since the early 1970s and Calaveras County was one of our first members. In fact, Calaveras has been a member so long that apparently you still refer to us by our prior name, the regional council name that appeared in your agenda. But in 2012, we changed our name to the Rural County Representatives of California. We represent 40 of the state's 58 counties around issues associated with rural living in California, rural life in California. In 2012, our Board of Directors, which is comprised of an elected supervisor from each of our 40-member counties, and in the case of Calaveras County, Supervisor Garamendi is your representative to our governing board. We adopted a strategic plan, and you see here the component pieces, areas of focus of our strategic plan. They center in these four key areas, that of equitable access, impactful advocacy, healthy communities, and operational excellence. Our vision really, RCRC started as a lobbying and advocacy entity and has expanded over the last 50 years to include not only lobbying and advocacy at the state and federal level, but also, we, we like to think of ourselves as an innovative service provider to our counties. And we execute our, our service, our innovative services through what we refer to as affiliate entities. And I'm going to run through very quickly six of our affiliate entities, the six through which we execute items that you see here within the broadband strategic, I'm sorry, boy, that just came out very naturally, didn't it?
And I'm looking for the George CCWD to be interviewed.
So I'll start, though, with our mothership, which is RCRC, and this is where all of our lobbying and advocacy occurs. We have a team of phenomenal lobbying and regulatory advocates who work on behalf of our member counties. What you see here on the screen in front of you are the primary areas that we engage in per our strategic plan, both at the state and the federal level. Many of these won't be a surprise to you, a lot of it is natural resource-based, unfortunately, due to the catastrophic wildfire situation, forest health has risen to the top of our advocacy agenda. But you can see here that the focus is really around items that are of great importance to all of our 40-member counties. And then we have a number of working groups, these are ad hoc working groups, they come up as the need arises, they're not part of our, our regular structure, but you can see there that the most important one, or the one of great importance right now, is a PG&E working group for reasons that I think we all know and are very familiar with. We work, have forged relationship with PG&E to facilitate conversations to, that hopefully alleviate issues at the local level across our counties. Golden State Finance Authority, I'm going to jump into our affiliate entities now. So Golden State Finance Authority, this is their 30-year anniversary, it was formed initially to provide affordable housing programs to the residents of our counties. And you can see there that we've expanded beyond affordable housing solutions into energy financing for energy efficiency and infrastructure financing. And the, the primary program, the one you're probably most familiar with, or hopefully will be as I leave here, is a down payment assistance program that's available to anybody across our 40-member counties, any resident of the counties or cities therein provides forgivable down payments, seconds, if you will, that allow homeowners, or allow people desirous of owning homes to purchase homes. And you can see there the statistics that since the initiation of Golden State Finance Authority, over 162 individuals have received in excess of $1.18 million in down payment assistance in Calaveras County alone. Another affiliate entity is called National Home Buyers Fund, and it's very similar to Golden State Finance Authority in the down payment assistance space, except for it is, as the name would lead you to believe, it is a national program that is run under RCRC's umbrella. And you can see there, 12 individuals have received in excess of $136,000 in down payment assistance in Calaveras County alone since the initiation of National Home Buyers Fund in 2002. This is a program that we started two years ago, it was actually the, the thought, the idea of our new CEO, I don't know that he's new anymore, he's been on the job two years, but he hailed as a former county administrative officer. And when he joined RCRC and became familiar with Golden State Finance Authority, he said, he asked the question if we could not craft a program that could be used by employees of our member counties specifically, that created a program that allowed for that forgivable down payment assistance for the, that would encourage homeownership. The program's been up and running for about eighteen months now, and you can see there on the slide the number of county employees that have taken advantage of the program across our member counties. As you can see, there are some details. You can get up to five point five percent in down payment assistance, again, in the form of a forgivable second as you purchase your home. And we can also have, and I'm not sure if this has happened here, I imagine it has, we can have members of RCRC or Golden State Finance Authority come and do a presentation to county staff to let them know we also have marketing materials that are available. So we really want to encourage use of this program by our member county employees. Golden State Connect Authority, this is an affiliate entity that was created in December of 2021 by the RCRC Board of Directors. Its area of focus is specifically around broadband. And you can see there on the right-hand side of your slide, the three specific areas that comprise our work, our focus of work. The first is broadband strategic planning. We have a goal of arming every one of the forty-member counties. Our membership in Golden State Connect mirrors that of RCRC. So we want each of our forty-member counties to have a countywide broadband strategic plan. And you'll see on the next slide that I'll go to in just a second, but we received a U.S. Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration grant that is paying for the development right now of twenty-six-member county broadband strategic plans. Calaveras County is included in that cohort. We also focus on technical assistance with the goal of increasing investment across our member counties and broadband deployment. So that might either be through a mechanism under Golden State Connect Authority that we're going to talk about in just a second, or it might be arming you all with enough information about where there are gaps in service through network design, through the broadband strategic plan, where you can have a conversation with your local providers or your ISP. So it's not a one-size-fits-all solution. We're all about just getting quality broadband to every address across our member counties. And then the third area of focus in our work plan is that of broadband deployment. And Golden State Connect Authority was created in large part in response to or to play off of the passage of SB one fifty-six that the governor signed in July of 2021, which was the landmark legislation that not only allocated six billion dollars to broadband investment in California, but it also, for the very first time ever in statute, allows for counties to own, operate, and maintain broadband infrastructure. Golden State Connect Authority, as a JPA of our forty-member counties, falls under that category of being able to own, operate, and maintain infrastructure. And that's actually what we intend to do and have been working toward under Golden State Connect Authority. And we're going to talk about that in the next, a little bit more in the next item on your agenda, so I'll keep high level at this point. But that is a goal, and we're in the middle of evaluating and identifying project areas for our initial broadband deployment. This is just a slide that we'll quickly show you. The counties in blue, again, Calaveras being one of them, are those that were included in our Economic Development Administration grant for the development of broadband strategic plans. Again, those are underway right now and should be complete by November, so you will have a countywide broadband strategic plan in your hand before year's end. The next of our affiliate entities is called Rural Alliance, Inc. This is a 501(c)(3) that was created years ago, but then it was dormant for a number of years, and the board just re-initiated or breathed new life into it, if you will. The area of focus for Rural Alliance, Inc. is that of education and research around issues that affect rural counties. And it's specifically focused on educating and providing data to inform policymakers of issues affecting rural communities, such that we can use that data and use the information that's shared to impact decision of these policymakers, predominantly at the state level initially, but definitely over time it'll be at the federal level as well. This was just in the last year, the Board of Rural Alliance, Inc. approved a business plan, and they are executing on it as we speak. I should mention, as I go into the last few, that all of these affiliate entities have as their governing board elected supervisors. So one member from each county, or in the case of Rural Alliance, Inc., and in the case of Golden State Natural Resources, those boards are smaller, but they are still elected supervisors from the RCRC board. Golden State Natural Resources, I believe this is the fifth affiliate entity I'll share on our way to completing the sixth. Golden State Natural Resources is a 501(c)(3) corporation that was started four years ago, three or four years ago, with the express purpose of focusing on forest resiliency and forest health. Initially, I will say that the focus of Golden State Natural Resources was on removing low-to-no-value biomass from the national forests in California and removing that material to what would be pellet mills that would be created on sites acquired by Golden State Natural Resources in Tuolumne and Lassen County for the express purpose of using those pellets for industrial energy generation overseas for countries that are working to become more compliant with the Kyoto Accords, I'm sorry, the Paris Accords and the Kyoto Agreement. But really, what has happened up late with our new leadership, and we have renewed focus now, we moved away from the fact that Golden State Natural Resources will own and operate these facilities and are focused more on doing what we do best, which is getting these two sites through SEQA and entitled such that we can sell the sites to companies that know how to produce pellets or any other wood product from the low-to-no-value material that is removed from the forest. So we're going to get out of the pellet-making business ourselves and really tee it up, hopefully for some investors to come in, acquire the sites, and then utilize the material that's removed from the forest. The whole intent or focus now, as I mentioned earlier, is on forest resiliency and the restoration of forest health. So with our master stewardship agreement that we have for the entirety of Region Five, which is all eighteen national forests in California, we will look for opportunities to provide access to the forest for those that can go in and remove material. And by that, I mean, we're going to work with the U.S. Forest Service in Region Five to facilitate environmental work and advance environmental work that will allow for the removal of that material. And then the final affiliate entity that I want to touch on today is that of our Environmental Services Joint Powers Authority, also known as ESJPA. You can see there, it was formed in nineteen ninety-three. Calaveras County is a member, one of the twenty-six member counties that participates in ESJPA. It was formed initially to assist with compliance with SB thirteen eighty-three, but it does provide regulatory advocacy and legislative and technical assistance around recycling, reuse, particularly with assistance on county landfills and how to operate them more efficiently. And with that, that is RCRC. So again, RCRC is the organization under which our lobbying and advocacy occurs, and then through our affiliate entities, we execute the innovative services that all benefit our member counties.
Is there any board questions? No? Is there any public questions? Any member from the public? No? Online?
There is none online.
I do have a question myself, and I want to go back to your slide that has to do with Golden State Finance Authority, the Golden State Affordable Housing Solutions and Affordable Energy Financing slide?
Yes.
That has specifically only to do with PG&E or Sacramento, what's their power company there, or solar, financing for solar? Is there any talk about expanding this program to just utilities financing? Many senior citizens now with the costs of water and sewage and other things skyrocketing, and they're on fixed incomes, they're trying to hold on to their homes and not lose them. And there's some things going on here in Calaveras County, but I'm sure it's all over because of state water standards are going up and that costs go up. So is there any talk at RCRC about maybe expanding that program?
Yeah, that program, the energy-related program that's referenced on that slide for Golden State Finance Authority actually is statewide. It's not specifically in PG&E territory. So, and what they, what, the program that they execute there is the PACE program, the Property-Assessed Clean Energy Program. So they were very active in residential PACE for a number of years, probably close to a decade. They've moved the program away from residential to more commercial PACE. So they, it is statewide, though, and they work primarily through the companies that do the installs, that are the first line of marketing to corporations and historically residents to provide the lower, the PACE financing.
So do you think there's a possibility that at least at one of the RCRC meetings, the regular meetings, that maybe this can be brought up?
Sure.
Because it is becoming a big problem, and I don't want to see more people out on the street because they can't meet their needs financially, and they need assistance. I'd rather give them assistance because they need it than push them out on the street because they can't afford it.
There is, I'm sorry.
Supervisor Toffenelli is our rep. I will be happy to bring that to the board. I know that RCRC, John Kennedy has worked very actively with the CPUC in trying to come up with regulations to support low-income houses as these prices go up. So CPUC is a labyrinth unto itself, but I'll be happy to bring that forward.
Thank you.
I will say relative to the CPUC, our government affairs team is actively engaged with all aspects of work going on at the CPUC, from energy to electricity to broadband. So to the supervisors' credit, that is something that we can carry back and mention. There's also a portion of each meeting where we open each RCRC board meeting with community concerns, so we could bring it up at that point as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. No other board comments? If not, Barbara, thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we will take just a couple-minute break before we go into the next item. Okay, we are back, and we're here for item number eighteen. This is agreement, the economic and community developments, make a public benefit finding, authorize the board chair to sign a memorandum of understanding and license agreement between Calaveras County and Golden State Connect Authority for financing, ownership, operations, and maintenance of broadband infrastructure and public right-of-way, and receive an update on high-level design and priority broadband project areas. Kathy, Stan, and Barbara, you're up.
Good morning, Chair Toffenelli, honorable board. Kathy Galino, Economic and Community Development. To my left, I have Stan, our IT director, and to my right, I have Barbara Hayes from RCRC and Golden State Connect Authority. So before you today is a memorandum of understanding between the county and Golden State Connect Authority discussing the ownership, operation, and maintenance of broadband deployment. As you heard earlier, that's part of Golden State Connect Authority's purview. They've been great to work with. They've provided a lot of assistance and direction in some of our grant funding, our LADA grant, which is our local agency technical assistance grant for high-level design. We will also discuss some of the information that we've received back from Tilson Engineering, who provided us some high-level design and some candidate summaries that we provided each board member, trying to get to those priority projects in Calaveras County with this first tranche of funding. I am going to turn it over to Barbara at this point to discuss a little bit about the MOU, and I will get some more information up to you.
Hello again, everyone. As Kathy mentioned, I'm Barbara Hayes. I'm the Chief Economic Development Officer at RCRC. And as I mentioned during my previous presentation, Golden State Connect Authority is a joint powers authority comprised of forty-member counties, Calaveras County being one of those. Golden State Connect Authority was established in December of 2021 around a program of work that includes executing broadband strategic plans for all of our counties, providing technical assistance, and ultimately resulting in the deployment of broadband infrastructure across our member counties. And before I touch on the MOU, I just want to talk for a moment about what that infrastructure looks like. Golden State Connect Authority as a JPA is a form of government, so it is, will be a municipal project. The model that we are employing is that of an open-access, last-mile broadband network. And what that means is that Golden State Connect Authority will finance, construct, own, operate, and maintain the infrastructure and invite providers onto the network. Golden State Connect Authority itself will not be a provider. It will invite providers onto the network to compete for customers and offer different packages at different price points, packages being speeds, at different price points in a competitive environment. We are focused on fiber deployment because we believe this is the most future-proof, or it's not just that we believe, it is the most future-proof of network infrastructure. So our focus is on fiber last mile, last mile being the delivery of service to the address. So this will be service fiber deployment in an open-access model that will go directly to the address, to the customer. So with that, by way of background, as Golden State Connect Authority was established, our focus has always been on the deployment of this model of infrastructure. It's not anything that we created on our own. If you go outside of California, the open-access municipal last-mile broadband infrastructure is something that's much more common in other states than it is here in California. And in fact, our partner in this endeavor is Utopia Fiber, which at present is the largest open-access municipal broadband network administrator in the United States. And I say at present because we will probably very quickly surpass Utopia in size and scope delivery of service here in California. We are working very closely with the CPUC on the launch of this effort and have been working with them for the better part of the last three years on teeing this project up. We are also working very closely with, as Kathy mentioned, with Tilson Technology, who is the engineering firm that we used to develop the conceptual and high-level design and financial feasibility that is underpinning the decision-making process as we go into identifying potential project areas for this initial phase of our endeavor. I want to just stop for a moment and focus on that first before we get into much more discussion, that this is, in fact, the first of what will be probably over the ensuing decades, the first application for funds that we are going after. And that's the item that we're talking about today, which is the identification of project areas by which Golden State Connect Authority can and will apply for federal fund account slash last-mile grant dollars from the CPUC to augment the base financing that we will use to develop these project areas to deploy this infrastructure. We are assisted, just to bring you a little bit of comfort, we are assisted by an external finance team that's comprised of underwriters finance team that's comprised of underwriters, financial advisors, and Utopia Fiber that have done this for decades, this being the deployment or the issuance of bonds for the deployment of broadband infrastructure. So, we are not going into this dewy-eyed in any way, we are going in eyes wide open with experts by our side. With that, let me back up to the item that we have here today with that as context, is that Calaveras County did receive a local agency technical assistance award in the amount of $500,000, and that was, I believe, last fall. At that time, Calaveras County entered an MOU with Golden State Connect Authority by which we then took on the contract management and grant administration aspect of that grant on your behalf. We turned around and contracted on behalf of not only Calaveras County, but 38 other jurisdictions, 32 of which are counties and seven in total cities, for actually a total of 39 grants under LADA that we are managing. This is all feasible because of these LADA grants and because of the expertise of the engineering firm that we have engaged with, which is Tilson Technology. And then, as I described it, the engineering fiduciary role that Utopia Fiber is playing alongside Tilson Technology to be our eyes and ears, our, I am not an engineer, so Utopia Fiber is our engineering partner in this to oversee the work and quality check the work that's been done. We, under the LADA grant, there was a base level of work that was done called conceptual design, it was A-design, not B-design, we like to say, where fiber was designed to every address across Calaveras County unincorporated because that was what the grant called for. This is the basis of network design. We then spoke with a team from the county during our conceptual level briefing. The data drove us to the unserved addresses, and then the local team, the county team here, provided insight on areas where the data may not be actually telling the real story. And this is well-known for broadband data, it's not anything that's unique to Calaveras County, the data is flawed in large part. So, the county provided a little bit of insight that resulted in a high-level design that you saw in your packet. Where we are now is Golden State Connect Authority, together with our partner awardees, in this case, Calaveras County, is using the data that came out of the high-level design done by Tilson overseen by Utopia Fiber to evaluate project areas against the federal fund account last-mile grant program. So, we have to match our request with the priorities for the CPUC's program. So, we've done an evaluation, and this, there has been a team from the county that includes your CAO, Deputy CAO, the folks sitting here at the table with me, Supervisor Garamendi as Chair of Golden State Connect Authority has been involved, whereby we evaluated and received input from the local team as to what areas were priority, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. The next step in the process, once those priority project areas have been determined and approved by Golden State Connect Authority, and by that I mean not Barbara Hayes as I sit here today, but really upon advisement of our financial partners and Utopia Fiber, who are helping us in the decision against the backdrop, again, of the program requirements for federal fund account last mile. We will apply for, I'm going to stop calling it federal fund account and shorthand it for you, the FFA account. We will apply on behalf of project areas, if this board approves it, on behalf of Calaveras County for projects that we will then undertake, we being Golden State Connect Authority will undertake, to build that open-access last-mile network. Once we apply and hopefully receive that award, we will execute, if it hasn't already been done at that point, we will execute an MOU with Calaveras County before anything happens, and this is the MOU that's before you in this packet. It's meant to, and this is, I am not a lawyer, so I say that, but it's meant to really delineate what the expectations are of Golden State Connect Authority and what the expectations are of, in this case, the County of Calaveras. And really, from a program point of view, the components in the MOU that are of greatest importance to us are really three, three items, none of them monetary, that we will need in partnership with Calaveras County. And that is your assistance in identifying public real estate on which we can locate huts. These are small cinder block metal roof buildings that can be painted any color and made to look beautiful, that are secure and which our electronic components will go. And the second item is a single point of contact that you all identify that will help us with expedited permitting as we build around Calaveras County. And then the third and final is really just to be our eyes and ears on the ground as we complete the design for this network, as we move into low-level design from the high-level design analysis that you've seen, go to low-level design, to really provide that input on, don't go down that road, there's an abandoned rail track, you know, or a wetland that is only on maps, you know, or only appears in the winter. That kind of intelligence from the local level will be of great importance to us. Other than that, Golden State Connect Authority, as I previously mentioned, will finance, construct, own, operate, and maintain this infrastructure on behalf of our member counties in which we have deployed the infrastructure. That was long Stan, that was teed up with, Barbara will talk about the MOU, but there you, there's, there's some, there's the background for you.
Stan, you please. Sorry. Is it on now? Okay. Before we go any further, are there questions that the board may have that are specific to what Barbara just covered on the MOU?
I do have a couple of questions, and I'm not sure if you have the information here available, but when I met with Kathy and Stan, we had some maps.
Right.
Are those maps available now that we can put up there and ask questions about?
They are.
They are? Can we put them up there to show exactly what areas we're talking about and the public can see?
Yes.
Well, that's part of your presentation?
Well, that's, that's, that's okay, we can, it will flow into it.
Okay. Well, if it's part of your presentation, then...
Are there other questions on the, on the MOU?
I would like to ask one, Chair. The Screen Actors Guild is out on strike and has been out on strike for quite a while. And when the last time that they did their agreement, they had no idea that AI would become an issue that they would even have to deal with, and it's become an issue. My question, and I'm not a lawyer either, Barbara, but I would love to know, going forward, I mean, is wireless going to be the next, is five years, is this all going to change? And does this MOU limit us? Because I always get nervous when we sign things in perpetuity, and does that license, will that license affect anything that comes down the road five years from now, as far as technology changes? I personally use Starlink, and where I used to get 10 download, I get 170 now, and my upload's four. Is it, is it future wireless?
Well, wireless needs fiber to operate, so let's keep that in mind. The backhaul requires robust fiber infrastructure, especially as more Starlink customers come on and more fixed wireless comes on board. So, our, what we say at Golden State Connect Authority is our focus is on fiber first, because fiber is not going to be able to go everywhere, just geographically and from a geological point of view across the rural areas of California. So, wireless is a part of our, our plan. We will build the fiber infrastructure and get it to the addresses that are most feasible for fiber, but there's, you know, the house that's five miles down a dirt road on a hill will probably be a Starlink. But that you will, that home will benefit in perpetuity from the fiber infrastructure that's been built that it needs for the backhaul service.
Thank you, that's brilliant to know.
You're up, Stan.
Okay. And Kathy. So, should we start with the spreadsheet first? Well, leave, leave who we've got here. So, the Tilson Engineering Team had, had developed a list of 46 potential high-level design areas. Those areas show up on, on the map that you see on the screen. Tilson provided the, the information back to County GIS, and so some of the tools that we're going to be seeing here, shout out to County GIS for putting it into a model that we can, that we can all use and, and tie into some Calaveras County information as well. It made it a little bit easier for us to, to go through and understand the information that was, that was provided, so. Along with the map, we've got a spreadsheet, and, and if we can call up the spreadsheet. Coming up, okay. And, and in the spreadsheet, we, we have, we have identified potential project areas that then, as Barbara was talking about, getting the funding from FFA. We are, we are not, we are not at a point where we are asking for official approval from the board at this point, so this is, this is letting you know where we are in the process, and, and there is a little bit more work in finalizing, finalizing our list. We are, we are, the initial list will be working within the, the approved FFA funding of $30.8 million is our, is our max for the county. So, we are coming up with project areas that can be developed within that $30.8 million. So, each row has, has some of that financial information for, for each of the 46 projects. And, and we have, have identified projects within several geographical areas within the county, and, and we can, so the information is showing up here on the spreadsheet as far as the underserved, the unserved within, within each, along with, with the number of households that are in with, within each area. So, this is the background, some of the background from which then we built the map that Chair Tofanelli was talking about. So, can we go?
Do we want to, do we want to talk about the table? Does anybody have questions on the table and kind of what the numbers mean? Just to make sure that...
So, some of the key information, the passing units, that's, that's the number of households that are there. And then there's the CPUC unserved, and when, when, when the grants are submitted, some of the key information has to do with, with, well, how many unserved are we, are we supporting? So, so that will show up in, in the grants that Barbara's team is working on.
Can I just mention just for a moment that $30.8 million that's been allocated to projects in Calaveras County originated with the passage of SB 156, $2 billion was allocated for last-mile grant program. That $2 billion was dibbied up based on unserved addresses across each county in California, and that includes all the cities they're in. So, the $30.8 million that was allocated for Calaveras County is not allocated to the county itself, it's allocated to, to projects that deliver fiber service to those unserved addresses. And eligible applicants for this money include ISPs, service providers, and network administrators, chief Golden State Connect Authority, and then telecom-related nonprofits. So, because Calaveras County is a member of Golden State Connect Authority, we are looking for direction from you all on what areas you would like us to focus on to apply for across Calaveras County for the deployment of broadband infrastructure.
And Barbara, you may want to talk a little bit more about kind of what the criteria is that we need to really work in our underserved communities.
Yeah, so that, as Stan mentioned, that CPUC unserved column is an important one. And then some of the, the other requirements that we look for that aren't, that you won't see on this sheet have to do with, we are looking for projects that align with the state open-access middle-mile project as it goes through Calaveras County. We're also looking for projects that, where we can package together a bundle of project areas that includes 75% low income, because that's a requirement of FFA in order to get certain points for the application. So, there are, there are other things that aren't just monetary that involve the decision-making process in our evaluation.
I just want to make a, I just want to make a clarifying point. We are, this is a very complex financial rubric that's put together. We have a $30 million amount of money that we can access, other people will want to be accessing that as well. So, what we're going through is we're lining up the federal, people who qualify, federal funding, state funding, and that is what Utopia is molding. And then I think the really interesting thing is we're bringing in private sector bonding to help cover this debt rather than, rather than from us. And that is a complete opposite way things have traditionally happened in the state, where we've gone from, usually it's private sector trying to leverage public sector dollars. What we're doing is we're public sector leveraging private sector dollars. And so, we turned it around, upside down, and I think, and so when you look at this, they've got to make a business decision on what the private banks will help fund. I just want to make that clear, thank you.
And if I could just add a little bit of intel about the far-right columns there that show up in red. So, Tilson, as part of their high-level design work, did all of the analysis that gets us through the cost per subscriber column, or all of those columns that appear on this spreadsheet in black. The last two columns were added by Golden State Connect Authority in consultation with our financial, our external finance team, again, KeyBank and our financial advisor and Utopia Fiber. And what that shows is to Supervisor Garamendi's point, is the foundation of each of our project areas, the financial stack at the foundation of each project area will be the issuance of bonds, tax-exempt bonds, that Golden State Connect Authority will issue, that will be purchased by private investors. And then what you see there in the far-right column, and it's labeled poly shortfall, or forgive our shorthand, is the amount of the delta between that which is financeable for that specific project area, or that polygon, that row, and what is needed to build that entire project area. So, by way of example, in the case of Polygon 1-1, if you go all the way to the far right, you'll see that after a bond is issued for that portion of that project area that is financeable via bond financing, we still are short $18 million that we have to make up with grant dollars. FFA last mile being the most immediate, the one that's before us now, there will be others coming down the road. So, this is not, again, back to, this is our first footfall into this, it is not the last, so don't feel like if a project area didn't make it in, oh my gosh, I, I'm bitter and disappointed. We will keep it on our list and look for future funding opportunities to include all areas that are in need of service.
As we've talked about before, the, the initial subset of the 46 areas that were identified will, it's, it's our, it's our first set of projects that we're going after. Barbara just talked about that there will be more. The, the full list on here was in excess of $200 million, which obviously we're, we're not going to sign up for that at this point in time. So, so it is, it's, it has been our task to come up with, with a list of projects that we can work on within that roughly $30 million. And so, we have, we have almost completed that. We, we have the ability to add a little bit more that we are working on now. But if we can pull up the map again that Chair was speaking to. Now, the, now the next time that, that we are showing each, each of the members of the board, this will be enhanced a little bit more so that it's easier to pull up the, the individual areas that we are looking at. But we can zoom in here, we could go to what we've got in the San Andreas area. We could go to what we've got in the San Andreas area. Zoom in a little bit more.
A2 and 214.
Right. So can you...
More?
Well, yes, and just move the mouse around there. So these areas of San Andreas are included. And then we've got areas in the Mountain Ranch area.
As you're clicking around, if I could just point out that the blue lines on the map indicate the state middle mile infrastructure. So at all times, we want to at least start a project immediately adjoining the state middle mile.
And on that, the state middle mile, the last time that we were in front of the board, we talked about the state having a 10,000-mile project for middle mile throughout the state. The state has come back in about the last month and spoken about the high rate of inflation for the costs for everything that goes into building out the middle mile. And the state is going to be cutting back that 10,000 miles to about 8,300 miles in the first phase. As a result of that, Calaveras County, which had a little over 100 miles of middle mile, is losing about 20% of that, specifically the area on Highway 4. Highway 4 had already been cut back to 10,000 miles. Originally, we were looking at Highway 4 going all the way up the corridor to Calaveras County. That was cut back to, and in, let's see, about halfway up. And now Highway 4 will cut off at Vallesito. So we thought that we were going to have Highway 4 up to Arnold. Now we are going to have Highway 4 up to Vallesito and nothing for state middle mile after Vallesito. So some of the shapes that you will see on this map that we're going to be dependent on that middle mile on the Highway 4 corridor up to Arnold, it would be a little bit more difficult to include those. And then on the middle mile from Angels Camp to San Andreas has also been delayed. So there again, we have to take that proximity to what middle mile will be in place into account. So, all right, so we've got San Andreas is included, and there's areas in the Mountain Ranch area. And the third area that was on Barbara's list was?
Vallesito.
And...
Vallesito to Douglas Flat.
Right.
Douglas Flat.
Right. So there are a limited number who we're providing, going into the, in the next board meeting. As we further refine this in the next few days, we will be providing more information to the board on what those specific areas are so that we will be looking for action to be taken on, are we in agreement with moving forward with these areas? We're not asking for that approval at today's meeting.
So one of the other areas that we're looking at, when we provided input on the high-level design and the priority areas, looking to target that $30.8 million, thinking that we're just going to get it, they're just going to give it all to us. But also looking at other priority projects, some play off of others. You build this, and it makes sense to build that, the cost comes down. But one of the other areas that we're looking at is this A2-1 area, or no, A3-2, pardon me. And that's what these yellow areas are. These are areas that we're looking at for additional opportunity. We don't have the ones colored.
No, we will.
We will, though. This all just happened last night, literally. So we're working as quick as we can, as efficiently as we can, and trying to get the best bang for our buck.
There's been some new information the last few days.
Any board questions?
Mr. Chair, I just want to thank, I want to, as Barbara and Kathy and Stan have put out, this is something that's happening in real time. We are literally flying the airplane and building it, but the airplane is airborne, and we're going. This crew, Barbara's crew, will submit between $500 million and $900 million with grant applications within the next 30 days. So I want to thank you for taking the time to come up today. Since you've got 39 other hungry counties, large cities, looking at this, I want to give a special thanks to Kathy and Stan, who have just been, I don't know, Stan, we all know his enthusiasm, and he just threw his shoulder to the wheel. And it has just been a pleasure building this plane with Kathy and Stan. And a special thanks to Doug Pozoni, who's done some great work with GIS and is really showing a lot of counties how this is done. And it's a tool that, you know, if we had 30 million dogs, they'd all have as much luck as we have. So I really want to give a thank you to that. But I think that where they are is we're submitting these packages, trying to figure out the way that it makes financial sense. It's got to not only pass the political filters that we provide, the technical filters that Utopia provides, but also the real market data that comes from our financing team, from the banks. If we put together a project that they can't sell, the project will fail. And so we have private markets looking at what we're doing and judging us. And it's looking good, because I think we're going through all the steps. But this is exciting. As you all know, I'm not the biggest fan of internet. That's some of my first TikTok video I've ever seen this morning, if you want to see how far behind I am. But I also don't know how to fly an airplane, but we know how to build airports, and we know how to build septic lines and roads. So this is actually following, I think, very closely to what some of our county's core competencies are, building infrastructure. And this has been a great ride. Two years, 20 million; three years, we'll be at half a billion. So it's grown exponentially. But thank you all very much.
Thank you. I would like to come back to a...
Thank you. To a comment on the MOU, and Barbara spoke a little bit about this, but I wanted to make sure that we all understand that the work that's in the MOU, that comes into play after we get the funding. So the help that Golden State Connect, Barbara's team, are doing to help us get the funding, putting in the funding requests, there's significant work that goes into that, that comes out of the work that we have done with the LIDA grant, with the design, with selecting the areas that we want to go after, with the work that Barbara's team is doing to put in the FFA grants and get the funding. It's not until we get the funding that all of the work that's in the MOU really kicks in for getting the shovels in the ground and doing the construction and the rollout and so on. I wanted to emphasize that and then talk a little bit about what we will be coming back at the next board meeting and talking about in terms of having a representative for the county that can be that individual that can be working with Golden State. When Golden State has questions and they say, we really need to get direction, get answers, and so on, in a short time period, then we'll be talking to you about that at the next board meeting on what our ideas are in terms of how we can have that primary representative, not single, that primary representative to be working with Golden State. So we'll be coming back to you with more on that.
Supervisor Stotter?
Thank you. Moving forward, Barbara brought up a point, you know, and Mr. Garamendi also brought it up, is, you know, finding places where it's going to be successful so that investors are willing to, or, you know, outside entities are willing to put forward the buck to make it successful. We're still on the point of that the first $30 million is, we're the easiest, most, let's see, the planning on the easiest way to be able to serve the most people that we can successfully do it so that in the future that we can continue to show that we have a map and Calaveras County is going forward and implementing these dollars to the best of our ability so more grants coming down the pike are more successful. And that's still our first priority with this first $30 million, correct?
That is correct. Looking for those wins that we can do with that initial investment.
And then, so I just want to thank you and Kathy. You've done a phenomenal amount of work here, and I hear you about, once we get into this, it's going to take somebody that's pretty much on point with just this one thing in the future, and now we'll come with the first grants coming down the pike. And working with Barbara and just everything you've done with RCRC Barbara and everything going to this point, I mean, Jack's kept me up to date, you've moved mountains. And we appreciate all the work you're doing, and we're more than pleased to have you working with us. Thank you. So good work all of you. Thank you.
Any other board comments?
See, no. But the public, is there any public comments on this item?
Is there any online?
There is none.
See, none, we'll close public comments. And I want to thank Kathy and Stan, too, and Barbara for all the efforts you guys have been doing on this. We met, and some of the questions I had at the time of that meeting have been answered in the MOU. So I want to thank you guys for all your work and your effort on this. And going forward, the next presentation, I have some other comments that I'm going to hold off till then because we need funding first. As you said, so all this could be thought. It's all great, and the maps are fine, but without funding, it stays on there, just a map. So, but I will, and some of the comments I think I had during the time we had met. So, but other than that, I will call for a motion.
Mr. Chair, to your point, as the Nunzette St. Thomas Aquinas would say, and Michael confirmed this, no margin, no mission, we have to make this be a good financial project. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
A motion by Supervisor Garamendi. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Stopper. Robin, can we please do a roll call vote?
Supervisor Garamendi.
Aye.
Supervisor Stopper?
Aye.
Supervisor Huberty?
Aye.
Supervisor Fallendorf?
Aye.
Chair Toffenelli?
Aye.
Thank you.
Passes 5-0. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will take a five-minute break.
I can't do without it. I mean, it's just electronic never works for me. What's up?
All right, we are back. We're on to item number 19 on our regular agenda. This is the agreement, Building Department, approve a memorandum of understanding with the Calaveras Fire Joint Powers Authority for the county to perform inspections and enforcement, enforce a minimum standard regarding fire safety, and to authorize the board chair to execute the memorandum. Doug Oliver, you are up.
Thank you, Chair members of the board. Doug Oliver, Chief Building Official. This is kind of a big deal. I normally don't come up here nervous, but fire prevention is a big deal in this county. And so we've taken the utmost care to bring you what we think is your board's vision in a form that we could make acceptable to the state authorities and the fire districts and comply with regulations. So I kind of want to give you just a brief history of how we got to this place in the county, and then a brief discussion about the memorandum itself and what it means, and then briefly let our new fire marshal come up and explain what program we have for you should you sign this and how we're going to conduct business in the county. And it does mean a lot to me because I understand fully that building departments come from fire departments. The original building codes, developed in the 20s, were not enforced by a building department. There was no such thing. It was the fire chief or the fire marshal of the jurisdiction that performed these inspections for minimum safety in the built environment. My father grew up in a building that was inspected by the local fire marshal prior to them plastering the walls, and his job card that he signed is still in those walls to that day. So this goes way back. But we'll see as we get in this, there's some history and some tradition, and it's an excellent opportunity to identify, based on that history, how we negotiate this process. So December 6, your board adopted a strategic plan, and contained in that plan was a direction for the building department to establish a joint powers authority or memorandum of understanding between the fire districts, enhancing collaboration and efficiencies for building and planning activities. So once that was adopted, we set to work, understanding what the codes are, what the connecting elements are, and we started working with the fire districts on what are the needs in the community, and we found that there was a greater opportunity there. And so we put together a presentation that we provided to you May 5 that identified the ultimate needs of the community if we were going to be more efficient across the board and provide a greater level of fire prevention service. And your board did give direction for us to bring forward a MOU for your consideration. Once we had that direction, we worked extensively with County Council's office, and I'd like to thank them for all of their help on this because the language is tricky. The decisions that have to be made to comply with state regulations, that's no small feat. And so I really appreciate County Council's help on this. To get briefly into the MOU, there is some, I anticipated this would be brief, but there has been questions that the public really needs an answer to, because if you read this, the language is tricky. So I want to kind of get into the specifics, especially a couple of the components, items 10 through 12. Actually, we could extend that. I want to start with 11, item 11 of the MOU first, because this is very important. This agreement is not intended to abrogate, negate, or supersede the legal authority of the fire authority, its member districts, or the state of California. And there's two items here, one of them that allows them to retract services that they have delegated to us or give us services to provide on their behalf. The language is very specific. I'll start with the negative language because the positive is written the same way. Should the fire authority wish to terminate the county's status as its authorized representative to undertake any activity described in Attachment A, and I'll talk about Attachment A in a moment, that legally requires its authorization, or should wish to terminate it on behalf of a member district, the fire authority may unilaterally rescind such authorization without formally admitting the agreement. The language there is based on state law. And the state law, that I have a copy of here, very clearly identifies that the responsibility of panic and fire safety enforcement is the fire chief or the state of California. And there's only very limited areas where the building officials mention it. I'd like to read that to you very briefly here. And this is Section 13146 of California Health and Safety Code. Responsibility of the enforcement of building standards adopted by the state fire marshal and published in California Building Standards Code related to fire and panic safety or other regulations of the state fire marshal shall be as follows. The city, county, or city and county with jurisdiction in the area affected by the standard or regulation shall delegate the enforcement of the building standards relating to fire and panic safety and other regulations of the state fire marshal as they relate to R3 dwellings, as described in Section 1201. It states two items there for dwellings only. The chief of the fire authority of the city, county, or city and county, or his or her authorized representative. Or item two, the chief building official of the city, county, or city and county, or his or her authorized representative. Every item of this state regulation does not contain building official, which means that commercial construction of any kind, or anything that is not a dwelling, is technically, when it comes to panic and fire safety, the authority of that fire chief. And there's only three real options. They can have their own representative within their fire department. They can give it all to CAL FIRE and say, this is yours to do, or they can enter into an agreement and delegate the authority, which is what we've entered into here. But once again, this is tricky. We have nine fire districts operating under one joint powers authority. So once County Council and I were satisfied with the language, we tested that language by sending it to the state fire marshal's office to say, is this legal to do? by sending it to the state fire marshal's office to say, is this legal to do? Because a lot of jurisdictions have attempted to do things in the past that were similar, albeit with less fire districts to negotiate with, with varying degrees of success. State fire marshal's response essentially was, it is legal for fire districts to enter into a joint powers agreement under an MOU. It is also legal for a joint powers authority to enter into an MOU with outside agencies. They did also add, hey, take our name off of that abrogate or negate language because we're not part of the contract. So, I was trying to be careful and say, in no way does the county wish to take the responsibility of the fire chief or CAL FIRE, and CAL FIRE said, the language is good, that's not our contract. Well, thank you very much, State Fire Marshal's Office, because that made it very clear to us that we were on the right track. But if you read this language another manner, it could indicate that at any time a fire district alone, acting on its own, could contact the county and say, we don't want you doing that particular item. That's not really how it's worded, it is saying that the JPA would have to act on behalf of the member agency, which follows the appropriate legal chain of command. The fire districts communicate together and collaborate with the JPA. The JPA is one voice for them in communicating with the county. So, there is a process to add or subtract, but that does give adequate flexibility to the process because as staffing changes, as budgetary constraints happen, as the fire industry changes and fire prevention regulations start growing, there may be decisions made where the JPA could decide, we can handle it, we'll take it all back. Or some of those member agencies that retain some of the services could say, we have a short-term issue here, we'd like for you to provide those services, and the way this is constructed is to allow the JPA to recognize an issue and respond to it and then give us the appropriate direction. So, in no way has, you know, has a district attempted to direct directly from their districts. This has all been collaborative, and some of the features in here, we have been doing as a matter of building department process legally. We're just code-flying it now. And so, there are current processes, for instance, the code modification process that where you can ask for variances in item 12. It does state that the fire authority shall retain, with the sole authority to grant or deny such modifications of a variance. We already do that. We streamlined it by making the process such that if they need a, any relief from a fire code, they fill out a form in our department, they give us the necessary documentation and say, we'd like to try this because it's different and it'll fit here. We review it, we contact the fire district, and we say, okay, this is a request to your district fire chief, here's what it says in the code, this is our sentiment. They get to make the decision, they document their decision, and we let the applicant do what they need to do. We've been using that process for three and a half years already, and that is a working system. It has sped things up dramatically. But what if there's a fire in the back country and the fire chief is unavailable for a month? A commercial project may sit, and time is money. So, having the opportunity to review, having the opportunity to get it to them, using this process, it's proven to be solid, and we just wanted to make sure it was retained in the document. That being said, there is something that sounds a little harsh, but it's basically standard identification language. Item 10, should the parties not reach agreement on an interpretation of state building standards or on interpretation of a stricter district standard adopted in lieu of the building standards, the fire authority's interpretation shall control. In such a circumstance, however, any claim, cause of action, or other proceeding that can be reasonably said to result from the authority's contra-interpretation shall be deemed to be arising from or in connection with or caused by the fire authority to trigger the authority's identification and defense obligations. Essentially, what that's saying is, as the fire authority, as the fire chief, they never, in state law, they never relinquish their authority or their responsibility, and occasionally there may arise a different interpretation of the code. Because of the state law saying that that fire chief generally controls, we have to acknowledge that they have a greater understanding of their staff, their district, their equipment, and the abilities of their district to maintain fire protection and fire prevention. So, if they do make an alternate decision, it's never been a position of a building department to argue, and that's been consistent. But going beyond that, the county is essentially just protected here to say that if the district makes the decision, we are not responsible if there's any issues there. That being said, though, we have a great working relationship with these districts, and every fire chief shares our general interpretations across the board of fire and panic safety. We have an excellent working relationship, and we've built that over the last three and a half years. I don't anticipate this being an issue, but it is standard legal language, and I wouldn't necessarily remove it or change it. Just to acknowledge that, you know, if you read this, it might sound like we're pushing something off. We're not pushing something off. We are acknowledging that they are the experts, and especially the experts in their districts. And not only should they be afforded the right and privilege to make those decisions, those legal responsibilities are built into law, and we need to acknowledge that. What I'd like to do next is just identify that we didn't just bring you an MOU, we've been putting together the program, so should you sign this MOU, we are weeks from flipping the switch. We're ready to go. We've retained an expert who, after 30 years of plus years of fire service, retired and then decided, I want to get back into it, and he decided he wanted to be a permit technician. And when I interviewed him, I realized, hmm, I got something far better for you. I'm not a fireman. It would be foolish for me to try and entertain this program without having someone with this man's experience. John Parks has a 30-year career in fire service. He retired at the rank of captain, senior fire inspector, and arson investigator for the city of Palo Alto. He has 13 years in fire prevention, and he has a state senate recognition for response to the World Trade Center disaster, commendation, founder of the Milpitas Community Fire Aid Program, which has been operating for 33 years. And he's been instrumental in building the program that we envision that you want for this community, and what I'd like to do is give him opportunity to explain what we've built so far for you and give you a sense of what will happen next should you sign on the line and we flip that switch. Do you have a moment?
Thank you. Good morning, almost afternoon, distinguished board supervisors, CEO, council, fire chiefs. I'm honored to be here. Thank you, Doug, for the introduction. One of the things I did last night was I realized that there might be some questions about, not so much what we just talked about, because Doug has a pretty good handle on that. I think it's about customer service, and what I did was I wrote a mission statement, and I would like to present that to you now for a minute of your reading, if that's okay. Just while you're getting that, I'll just start. If you sign the MOU, I wanted to guarantee you that what you're going to be getting is a county unified fire prevention program. It's a one-stop shop in the building department where they have one fire marshal for any of the questions. One thing I wanted to say was that, you know, being a fire marshal in a fire prevention program has very little, it's a big part of it, a big component, but inspections are a very small part of the entire program. It's plan checking, it's community development. I'm currently working on, planning, with planning on the new hotel. I'm working on the biomass plant up in Wasteland, Wasteland, excuse me. There's a lot of stuff that the fire marshal does behind the scenes. It's community outreach, it's a couple of the events that we've been to, and I've spoken on Saturdays and evenings about fire prevention to the whole county. It's a streamlined permitting process and inspection services, so you don't have nine districts to go ask questions to. You have one person that can represent the nine districts. It's coordination with all the county agencies involved. I've been working closely with CCWD on the fire hydrants and that program. Again, one-stop shop. One person is a liaison to the fire districts and one city fire department. I've been working very close with John Robel in City of Angels Camp because he has a fire marshal as well as Valley Springs. So, we have three fire marshals in the county now, and we all work really well together. As you know, there's state mandated inspections, and I'm happy to say that two of the districts, Copperopolis and Altaville, have met 100% compliance. I helped them get their inspections done this year, and we had 100% compliance. It's friendly courteous service to all in our county. It's got, we have fire safety and fire preparedness, school education, stop, drop, and roll, smoke detectors, things like that. That's part of the fire marshal's job, is to go out and educate the children and also the elderly in the residential care facilities, is to kind of keep them safe as well. Business safety education, insurance policy compliance, first responder safety, both sheriff and fire. So, I look at things where if it was on fire and you have the sheriffs who are always in their car, they're always going to be first there, they may have to make a rescue. I want to make sure that there's not some high pile storage that could come down on them. Also, I'm a countywide investigator, fire investigator. I was the president of the Santa Clara County Arson Task Force, and I was state level two arson investigator, so I have that to offer. And this is a program that can comprehensively meet the county's strategic plan, and I wanted to see if you would, I'm sure you've just looked at the mission statement. But I'm really glad that we had a chance to talk about business. I have two businesses in Murphy's. I own two businesses, and I had a 25-year career in construction. One of the things I'll tell you on a personal note, I remember inspectors coming out to my projects, and I'm like, wow, I'll never be like that guy if I ever, you know, was ever made, inspectors are so rough. And I'm not that guy. I'm very courteous. In almost 14 years in the city of Palo Alto, and I have some very, very high-end clients, I've never had one complaint, and I've never, ever even threatened to shut down a business. The fire code provides me the opportunity to have programs to help people with their compliance. You can put them on one, two, and three-year annual inspection programs. You know, inspections are pretty much basic things like fire extinguishers, extension cords, certifications on standpipes and sprinkler systems, and other than that, you know, there's not a lot of things that would actually shut down a business, and I would be, that's not something I'd ever want to do. I start with education and engineering. Enforcement is not my bag. That goes to code enforcement, and I can't think of one in the seven months we've been helping with inspections. We've had some little things come up, but I always talk to the fire chief, and he always come up with a plan. And I've not had one complaint, everybody's complying, but you put them on a program, say, hey, we'll give you 30 days or a year, whatever you need, and, you know, be reasonable. Business is very important, especially in this county, and I know that. So, I take a general approach. I wrote that mission statement, and it comes sincere from my heart. I'm not the heavy-badged fire inspector thing, I want to help people. You know, there's no reason, I think that you would know if there was going to be a problem in your district from me personally, if we ever arose to a problem that there was a business. I would consult with you first to figure out how we can come together with something to do to help these businesses gain compliance. But in seven months that I've been doing inspections with the fire chiefs under their authority, I've not had any problems, not even one complaint. So, and we've made some progress. So, it's all about education and engineering. That's my philosophy, and I hope you'll sign the MOU and let us get started. Thank you.
All right, good morning, board. Mike Johnson at his past fire, but probably more specifically today is the president of the Fire Chiefs Association, and I got also the vice president of the JPA over here, Chief Dickinson. I just want to say a special thanks. Number one, to the collaboration of the county, the fire JPA. I really do feel like our unity over the last few years on a myriad of things is seamless, and I really do feel like we are collaborating to provide the best level of service we can for our community and take it to the next level. And a testament to the man just behind me, Doug Oliver, he had a conceptual idea when he came here to the building department of what we could do, and we embraced it. I know personally, I trust him fully as a professional, and the direction we're going, and we do need to collaborate. You are, your county fire department is consisted of nine independent districts. We are the county fire department, and I say that with a lot of pride in my heart. But along with that, we lack what big fire department or a whole county department would have, and none of us want to give up our autonomy, so nobody wants to remove that. But if we did have a bigger group like this JPA, the vessel essentially that gives us the ability to work together with MOUs, we can leverage our resources, and fire prevention is lacking. It lacks in my district. A subject matter expert like John Parks is a true asset, and I hope he sticks around for a very long time because they're bringing things to our attention because we put a lot of fires out and run medical calls. Not a lot of us come from a fire prevention background like John does, so we fully support this, and special thanks to you, Sarah. You have worked so hard for the JPA, and on this specifically, your patience is, I don't even have words, so thank you for that.
I appreciate that. I can't totally take credit on this one. One of my deputies, Julie Moss-Lewis, worked really closely with Doug on this, so I would take credit, but I can't.
No, you're awesome. And thanks to your staff.
Is there any questions from the board at this time?
Any board questions?
Yes.
Oh, Chief Dickinson.
So, as representing the JPA, I just want to say that as an example, I do have a fire marshal, it's Ryan Hamery, and he's very good at what he does, but he also has another job, is an arson investigator, and he goes up and down the state. The relationship that we have with John, yes, as a fire chief, I don't want to shut down any business, but on the other side, I got to make sure the community's protected. We had a mini gas station, it's a mini mart. I happen to be washing my car, I looked above, and we have security bars. Security bars have to be able to keep people from getting in, but the people that are inside living there have to get out. Reached out to Ryan Hamery, he took a look at it, he was, after that, he was out of town. We worked with John Parks, and the bottom line, as John says, collaboration, relationships. The owner of the mini mart went down to the county, got his permits, and we're getting take care of it the right way. That's the great part of us being able to work together. Additionally, with that, being proactive, just watch what's going on in Hawaii right now. I don't want us to ever be in that spot. When I go to bed every night is to make sure the community's safe and that I don't have an issue, even as what's going on without me with once in a while having to close a company, that a fire doesn't happen, that somebody doesn't die in a fire, and we didn't do the right thing. So, collectively, I think we're doing the right thing, and I think it's showing that this county, the board, Doug, the rest of our chiefs, we're very proactive, and I'm proud of that.
Thank you, Rich. No other board questions? I have a couple of questions. And I want to first say that this is a long time coming, and I've asked for it a number of times. I had conversations with chiefs over here about not having annual fire inspections being done, not only in, we have done it in Calco District, but we haven't done it throughout the county and haven't gotten done annually, so that's a state requirement. I think there's a step forward in doing that. I think for the safety of not only our constituents, but anybody that comes into the county that uses any of the public facilities or every, the public businesses that we have here are not even public. This extends to if you don't deal with the public, you have employees there at this, at the level of being public too, so you have to provide a safe workplace for them. And I'm familiar with it because I had a business, and I had chemicals, I had paints, I had gases, I had all kinds of things, and so I had to have permits not only from stock only from Stockton, I had to have permits from the state to handle all of that stuff. I had to have them all chained in certain areas. I had them stored and, and I had to also have a escape plan posted for employees. So they had a route, more than one route to escape if something happened. So, and that's, and it was annually inspected and it, it needs to be done that way because over time, you, you, things tend to get employees, if you don't check on them or whatever, not saying they're in a rush or trying to get their job done. I think it's a good thing and I think it's a safe thing and I think it really needs to be done. I just want to put that out there, that I'm in agreement with it. Some of the things in the MOU, I have some questions on because this MOU is in agreement between the county and the JPA, not individual districts. And what you brought out about doing inspections in there for permits, I, I understand that if you send it to the district chief and have them stamp it or their comments on it, bring it back and have, and give it to the person that's wanting the permit, that these, you need to put this, incorporate this or whatever in order to get the permit. I, I fully understand that part of it and I don't have an issue with that. But when I read things that individual districts, since this is a agreement with the JPA, the individual districts can, can adopt their own standards and then we're supposed to uphold their individual standards in each district. I would like at least the language changed to where the district gets the JPA approval, what they want to do in, in their district and then the, the JPA presents it to the county. So we're dealing specifically with the JPA and I, I understand what you're saying about the state, but still this agreement is with the JPA, it's not with individual districts. And, and I'm not sure if that's something that is being done elsewhere. I don't know. Does anybody know if there's any other, this type of agreements in any other counties, in the state or outside the state that has this type of a MOU?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
And what, what, is this, is this MOU in line with other MOUs if they exist?
Yeah. So one thing I didn't tell you was, we actually tried this in Palo Alto. We tried to get the fire department to go under the building, but it was a problem with the general fund versus an enterprise fund and unions and things like that. And it worked, it semi-worked. We never got it fully done, but that was not the, the problem. So this is the first county in this, in the history of the state of California that will do this legally. There are some counties that are doing this and they're, they're doing it, but we're doing it legally. I think when we talk about, when we, when we talk about the differences in the, in the districts, it's, everybody has the same codes. It's the state fire marshal codes and they can add by adoption of ordinance to strengthen their, their codes or different things that happen in those districts. And that exhibit A is kind of like the, is the letter that goes down to what they want us to do and what they don't. So I, I didn't see anything in there that was anything more than just the districts having a certain, like Evans Pass has a sprinkler ordinance. So I know that and I know I have to plan check for those kinds of things. I, I'm not really sure if there's anything more than just some minor nuances with the ordinances.
I, I just had, you know, it, it doesn't specifically spell that out in here. It seems to me that if a district wants to make changes in something in their district, then they can just go to the county. What I'm saying, agreements with the JPA. And, and, and so I'm saying they need to go to the JPA and, and then come, the JPA come to the county.
So I think Supervisor Topol, section 11 does make it clear that if, if a member district or the JPA as a whole wants to alter, say, okay, county, we no longer want you to do this function for us, that does have to go through the JPA. Like the district would go to the JPA and then the JPA would, would convey that to us. I do think that in paragraph 12, where if there's, if a property owner has requested a modification or a variance, it does say that the JPA or an individual fire district would retain that authority. So those two?
The, the, I might be able to answer this. Because what you're, what you're alluding to is let's say the district decides to vote and let's say, let's, let's go all the way to the top and say they vote to ban fireworks just in their district. Okay. Well, the fire code would say, here's a permit for fireworks. Here's, you know, here's the inspection process for a fireworks stand. The code would allow it, the code would have standards, but the district will have made a stricter regulation. And that's how that is written to, because if, if we did not have this language in here, it would mean every time any district saw a need in their district that would require stricter standards, they'd have to come back to this agreement and amend the agreement and bring this back to your board. What this allows them to do is say, as, as, because we, we are required, we're required to enforce the fire codes at a minimum. Local districts, local jurisdictions can, can adopt stricter standards, but never standards less restrictive. So in this situation, Evans Pass is a, a good example. The fire code may say that a certain type of occupancy can be 12,000 square feet without fire sprinklers. Their district says 5,000 square feet. And so the, which is why this is written the way it is. We would have an SOP manual that identifies any of the, the differences in the districts and we would be educating the public of those differences and plan checking to those standards, which is kind of similar to what we do now because we have different water districts, we have different sewer districts with different requirements on, on, you know, fats, oils and greases and water quality. And, and so our department as part of collaboration with outside agencies, we're on the lookout for anything that is a, a failure of a, you know, of a requirement by a district because we can't let a building permit roll out that is in violation of any state or local regulation. So this is, this is the, this is essentially the acknowledgement that the districts have the authority to make changes and we don't want that to overburden the process of maintaining an agreement like this. That's the best, best answer I could come up with.
Go ahead.
I think something's missing as well technically. And I, I think I kind of got, got where you're going. So there's also is a provision in the code called an alternate means and method. So if, example, you want to put a, a tent up in somewhere and you buy a tent and it doesn't actually have the state fire marshal's stamp on it, but it comes from another state but meets all the same codes, we can have you fill out a form saying, it's an alternate means and method that we've talked to the fire chief, we've talked to the council, we make sure that it's, and we have them fill that out and then they're exempt from that for that particular permit or that process. So it makes it, it makes it flexible, but it also gives flexibility to business owners that, you know, might have be struggling financially where we can put them on a better program, you know, with, with, with approval from the fire chief. So it, it works both ways. We can, we can be very flexible in the, in the code. I call it dancing in the gray. And then, but we can also be very customer friendly and oriented, customer oriented in these things by having alternate means and methods and variances. So that's very, very important to know that that's part of what we can do in, with all the districts where we meet these, these challenges, customer service.
Sir?
Supervisor Stover, are you satisfied?
Well, that question, but I still have other questions.
No, it's something I've talked to Doug Oliver very, very often and he, he's facilitated it, working with other fire chiefs from different areas and multiple times, alternate means and methods. And that's something that, you know, not every situation is the same and having those alternatives in your back pocket and being able to provide them because like somebody is like, well, I can't do this. And they give you a suggestion. You have those in your back pocket and it's like, you can't always give them exactly what they want, but you have the idea and the means to give them the alter, alternative to be able to provide that. And that's something that I've always been a fan of doing in our county in many situations. So. Right. And that's something, when I read this, when you first handed it to us, I felt like that was part of your intention. Thank you.
Supervisor Germandy?
I've just got one quick one. I just want to make clearly sure I'm, I'm understanding this because we have to look at these things as 20, 50-year agreements. One thing this job has taught me, things stick around for a long time. And, you know, right now we've got a, a great program set up here, but if things change in the future, if the county inspector comes in and disagrees with, or disagrees with the local fire chief or business owner doesn't, doesn't like what's going on, the fire, our local fire chief still retains the authority. They're just not responsible for all the inspections. So are, through our local fire chief, would they be the ultimate vote? And then through the JPA if we need to amend it? Or where's the buck stop when we don't have such a great collaboration as we do today?
Supervisor Germandy, if I could respond to that. The way this MOU is set up is that when it comes to the county's delegated tasks, it would, we would be answering to the JPA, not to the individual districts. The individual districts would, if they had any concerns, they would go to the JPA and the JPA would address those concerns as it sees fit and would provide us direction with respect to the tasks we're doing on behalf of all the districts.
Okay. So if, and if Mocal Fire decides that they don't want to be a part of this 30 years down the road, they can withdraw, correct?
Correct. To be, to be clear, I think we can sum this up succinctly by saying, the county is providing a service to the fire districts that enhances the county's services as well as the fire district services. But we are in a, we're in a position where we are providing the service, so we are taking, you know, the, some direction from them on what we are to do and how we are to do it. I know that, you know, as a county organization, typically, you know, other than the state, we're, we're the top, but when it comes to collaboration like this, sometimes in order to be the most efficient, sometimes we have to be in a position of service. And that's what this MOU represents.
Thank you. I'm, we're all very close to our, to our fire districts.
Supervisor Follendorf has a question.
Thank you.
Yes, Amanda.
Most of the, and the first question I had, most of it got answered, but I still am a little worried about the process, if anything turns and it sounds as everyone is asking it in a different way. So is there a way to put it in layman terms to the public, knowing that this is an advantage for everybody, that get it clear, so we understand how that works better? Or if a contributor comes to the board, we're able to educate them on this new process? And the other thing is, with these changes, how does this impact the SOI for these districts with LACO? So for example, if they're adopting these new expectations and standards, how is that going to meet the SOI and the LACO policy of the state of influences of what each of these individual districts are providing for the areas? And that might be a great area for more research, but looking from the other side of it, I am concerned about how that adopting this will trigger down the line under the LACO sort of system with SOI.
Yeah, I'm happy to pass that last question to counsel.
So I, yeah, so to answer the second question first, I think in short Supervisor Follendorf, it, it shouldn't affect that because this is not changing anything with respect to the fire districts. They're essentially, I mean, I, it's not a great analogy, but they're essentially contracting out us to just do what they already have the, the ability or responsibility to do. So, you know, as, as Doug mentioned, we are now performing these services on behalf of the districts, but it doesn't actually alter the districts or anything with SOI.
We're not.
I'm confident because of reading their, their policies under 1.3 and 1.4, the LACO policies of the SOI, I just, I am concerned about it. Doesn't mean I don't support this. I think this is a great idea and I'm glad, I'm happy to see this coming before us. I just want to make sure that we do our diligence and dot our i's and cross our t's.
To answer, I, the, the first item about process and what this is going to look like is that, should your board sign this MOU, we centralize the fire prevention. We have a county webpage for fire prevention, all of the procedures for fire inspection and fire review, the permit types, everything is centralized to the building department under the fire prevention program. And we start pushing out information to the public on the, the general process of obtaining fire permits, fire reviews, fire inspections, mandated, you know, fire prevention inspections on some of our business types. The, we also will be identifying on that webpage, should you be in these regions, you know, here, here are the, the district fire marshals that may be available at that time and here are their documentations. And in every step of the process, when we develop a procedure, we are sharing that with the JPA at their, their meetings, their monthly meetings and making sure that the JPA agrees that this is the process county-wide that everyone has buy-in. So for instance, the, as simple as a uniform policy, we need to represent the fire districts, specifically what does the JPA want us to wear in representing them as, as a fire prevention program? So John brought a draft to their, their meeting. They discussed, they agreed this is what we want. We put that on file. And so every one of these procedures that we are going to develop and push out as informational to the public is going to be first vetted through the joint powers. The, this MOU joins us at the hip in communication for the development of this program and we've, we've covered a lot of ground in a very short time. But expect that in general, if there's a fire prevention question, it will go to our fire prevention, the county fire prevention program first and we'll be providing that information to the public directly.
That answer your questions?
Yes, thank you.
Any other board questions or comments? Is there any public comments?
Good morning.
Again.
Good morning, Mr. Delorto.
Chief Delorto from McCallum Hill. I just want to share a couple of things with you.
The great fire of 1854 that wiped out the commercial area in McCallum Hill. I read a clipping from an old newspaper that said, "The fire department ordered that when it's rebuilt, Main Street would be 50 feet wide, Center Street would be 60 feet wide. And if you go there today, you'll see that that's for the most part exactly what it is." So the code enforcement has always been historically with the fire departments. By the way, I wasn't there in 1854, but, but this is, August is my 60th anniversary of joining the fire department. So I've been there for a couple of days and seen it a little bit. I've also watched the, the fire service for Calaveras County grow through those years. I happened to be in this meeting room for another subject years ago when somebody from, I think it was Dorington came in and said, "We have no fire protection because all the districts were small, built around the communities." And the county took it upon themselves to do a county-wide fire district outside of all the other districts. They came and they offered each district workers' compensation, insurance, fast attack engine if they would take care of the outside area. So that evolved. Then they created the county fire. And at that time, they thought that one size fits all and the department kept getting bigger and more expensive and not getting that much more done. They contracted with Cal Fire, excuse me, they contracted with Cal Fire for a very big dollar amount and eventually decided they weren't getting their services when I was on the board. Created a county fire department and that started getting out of hand, cost-wise and productivity. So the board of supervisors went to the districts in. So the Board of Supervisors went to the districts and caused all the districts to take in additional property. So McCallum Hills, one square mile is now 35 square miles. I have 20 seconds. The authority stays with the fire districts. There's a lot of people who want the one-size-fits-all, you're LACO people, do the same thing. It doesn't work.
Thank you, Chief. Any other public comments?
Just a question, David Murboza from Valley Springs. I was just listening to all that, and I have a little bit of experience in that, so I just have a couple of questions. With the nine districts, are we going to be able to adopt a common set of codes and ordinances? And then what about permitting and ordinances? When you're talking about high pile storage and flammable liquids, are we going to be able to have within all the nine districts the same ordinances, fees, and structures? And what about things like fire access and water flow? Because as I go around this county, there's enormous differences in fire access, roads, and water flows. Are we going to be able to come to consensus on that so that our prevention person is able to enforce that among all the nine districts? Or are we going to have this variance process where we're continually going, "Yeah, well, okay, Bob, not in my district, we can make a variance for that," because that'll make his life incredibly different? I worked within the JPA, so I kinda, I want to have some protections for him doing his job, too.
I think I have some answers for that. We have adopted a standard. There's very few exceptions in the districts, but the California Fire Code has its adopted triannually, the California Building Code, the state mandates that are on the books in Health and Safety Codes, those are our drivers for this whole thing. Like I said, there's only a couple of differences, and those are, you know, Ebbets Pass has a square footage for sprinklers. Not to say that the JPA wouldn't, couldn't convene and say, "Let's make that uniform across the board," but there's very few things that aren't standard. So it's important to note that we do have a minimum standard that we will be enforcing across the board. I'm sorry, sir, that second question, oh, the water. Where'd he go? There you go, water, there you go, fire flow. We have a standard for that as well. And since John has been here, we've been meeting at locations where the water supply hasn't been as, as maintained as it should have been, and we've collaborated with those business owners and improved that water flow. I will say that, you know, if you see a black tank out there with a connection, sometimes an engine captain isn't going to hook to it because he doesn't know what's in that thing. We've worked with the JPA to develop a placard that if we inspect that tank and it is serviceable and it meets the needs of the fire department, we can placard that tank and say that this is safe to hook up. Anyone from California who responds to a wildfire can see that tank, see that placard, and know I'm not going to ruin my engine pump hooking up to that thing. So we're already improving that, that level of enforcement of the minimum fire standards, and in no way has it impacted the county or the business owner in a manner that was generating any complaints. It's just, "Oh, I didn't know we had to have that," and, you know, they respond. So driveway size, roadway widths, all the 4290 elements, they are standard. We are already working with the districts and improving that level of fire protection on site, on many, on many current sites. And whenever there's a change of use or a new building that goes in, we evaluate to see, does it need to increase with the work that they're performing? So keep grabs, always, but we are slowly improving that fire protection and water storage in the county currently.
Any other public comment? Is there any public comment online?
There is not.
All right, I'll bring it back to the board. I want to say this before we go and ask for a vote. My main concerns are affecting the businesses, and I think we really need to work with the businesses because a lot of them haven't been inspected, and you come knock on the door and you show up, and they probably, some of them may not have any idea what's required statewide, code-wise, for their business in order to be served public or even have employees. And it could be a big shock, added to a lot of things that are going on right now in this county as far as costs and, you know, water and sewer and the integrated waste increases. There's just a lot of things going on that are affecting our businesses, and the businesses in Calaveras County are our heart. You can look at a lot of different other things, DOT or CBB, but the businesses here in the county is what our constituents use, what is the heart of this county. And we need to make sure we work with them and be able to keep them in business and not just close the door on them and say, "No, you got to fix it or get out." That's not the way we need to be. We, to, we can bring them up, and they're aware of what needs to be done, and they're aware of this is an annual inspection. It's not just being pushed on by the county, it's just not being pushed on by the fire district. This is state code, this is a requirement, and we're trying to catch up now to make everybody safe here in the county that uses these facilities. So I want to make sure that we're very adamant about that.
Well, well taken, sir. And I would say that, while I hope to make you feel better, that our initial move will be to send out flyers to every business owner that has a business license and, you know, has a business location with information on the common things that are normally looked at in a fire inspection so that they have the opportunity to evaluate their scenario before we get out there, and that we will be working collaboratively with them to improve fire safety when they can expect us to show up and what to expect. So the opening move is, is communication.
With that, a motion for a motion?
Just one thing before I make a motion. I just want to, you know, back Mr. Toffenelli's words up, you know, more often than not, if we can provide a roadmap to success to help our businesses in the community, that's as simple as it gets. I think you said that, you know, giving them time, not being, going the penal way so much as giving them the opportunity to have the time to be able to come to within the compliance standards and giving them a roadmap to how to do it the easiest way possible. So thank, thank you for that. With that, I'll make a motion.
Motion by Supervisor Stapper.
And I'd also like to say, just before I second that, I've had the experience of working firsthand with all of you, and I wanted to say thank you very much for all the work that you've been able to back me on. And with that, I'll second.
Second by Supervisor Huberty. Can we do a roll call?
Supervisor Stapper?
Aye.
Supervisor Huberty?
Aye.
Supervisor Garmendi?
Aye.
Supervisor Follendorf?
Aye.
And Chair Follendorf, Chair Toffenelli, thank you.
It passes 5-0. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And it is close to 12 o'clock, so I think we're going to.
Actually, Chair, I think Chief Johnson wanted to.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're absolutely correct. Chief Johnson, I think you have a presentation that you'd like to make.
If you don't mind, can we approach?
No, come on, come on, absolutely.
Fire marshal?
Yes. Senator Oliver?
Come on.
She, uh, she's standing right there. Okay. So, uh.
He's a fire marshal, he's a representative. State code.
Yeah, for the board, and you know, representatives, you know, being elected by the fire departments to represent them in any fashion, it's the most appropriate thing. So today's a very special day. In fact, we have multiple fire districts that will be delegating certain things to these two divisions in the sense that they're going to be, you know, carrying out fire prevention duties for us. So with that, we would like to first off, prevent, you know, on her with the chief building official badge, so that they're carrying out those duties and responsibilities, but you'll have this as a representative of local fire districts here in Calaveras County. And for the fire marshal, which is going to be presented to John Hart. So just getting that open so you can begin. We are super excited with this responsibility that he's going to be charged with. Yep? All right. She is officially.
We didn't have to go into instructions.
Try not to. And there are new fire marshals in the nation.
A little blood on the shirt, though.
Okay, there we go. So with this gentleman, you're now charged with more responsibilities, and we look forward to everything you're going to be doing for us in the future. We're not surprised. Thank you.
Yeah.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
It'll work.
Only it works.
Thank you. All right. What we're going to do here before, we're going to be going to lunch here shortly, but before we go to lunch, I want to do the recognition and acknowledgement. This is a proclamation of the clerk of Board of Supervisors to adopt a proclamation recognizing August 2023 as Child Support Awareness Month in Calaveras County. And Supervisor Huberty, I believe you have the proclamation?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So whereas the vision of the Central Sierra Child Support Agency is partnering with families to create self-sufficiency, and whereas the professional staff of the Central Sierra Child Support Agency work diligently to fulfill this vision by partnering with families involved in more than 4,400 cases and collecting nearly $11 million in support last federal fiscal year, and whereas the Central Sierra Child Support Agency declares its commitment to having a meaningful impact on the families it serves, and whereas the Child Sierra, Child Support Agency is engaged in educating its customers regarding their cases and the community regarding the services it provides, and whereas the Central Sierra Child Support Agency affirms the important role it plays partnering with parents to support the well-being of children, and whereas the Central Sierra Child Support Agency encourages parents to be accountable for their children, providing them with many opportunities to succeed, and whereas the Child Support Awareness Month recognizes and acknowledges parents who work diligently to support their children to provide both emotional and financial stability, and whereas the Central Sierra Child Support Agency thanks its partner agencies and recognizes its child support professionals who strive to continuously improve their customer service and make a difference in the lives of the children in our community. And with that, I'll hand it over to Julie.
Thank you, and I recognize that I'm standing between you and lunch, so I'll make it brief.
No, that's fine.
Thank you very much for calling us forward ahead of time before your lunch break. This has been a very informative meeting. We appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name is Julie Prado, I'm the executive director of Central Sierra Child Support Agency. I recognize that's a mouthful, so we often say CSCA. With me here is Kim Britt, she is our assistant director for the agency, and we appreciate your time today, and our purpose is really to spread the word about our organization and the work that we do. As I say as often as I can so that folks understand who we are, we would normally be the Calaveras County Department of Child Support Services. However, we, similarly to the fire department, have entered into a JPA agreement, so we operate and deliver services under that JPA format, so we are representing Alpine, Amador, Calaveras, and Tuolumne. As such, this was built back in 2001, I believe. Our name is Central Sierra Child Support Agency, making it difficult in my mind for families to really find us because we, when you go down the Calaveras list of departments, we're not there. So it's upon us to make sure that we're out there more than we have been over the last 20 years. We've spent the last three or four years ramping up our marketing so that we can make sure that we can meet families where they're at. We are working with, we're on the bus system here in Calaveras County, we're working with the library, we're developing a stronger relationship with Ms. Allen and her team. We are, we are located in her office as well. But to give you just a little bit of background, our organization's serving currently 4,400 families in our four areas. About 1,400 of those are here in Calaveras County. We have a small staff of 28, right now 23 because we're low on staff, we're recruiting, so if anybody is interested in working with our agency, we are open, and we have a couple of open recruitments at this time. We are the 23, 28 staff, that small staff are collecting nearly $12 million a year in child support. We are hoping to reach that $12 million goal this year. Last year was just over 11 million. Right about $3.6 million of that goes to families right here in Calaveras County. So our goal is to increase those collections, to meet families where they're at, to provide the services that every family and child deserves. We do believe, based on our research, that there are more families that need our services than we, than we have in our, in our caseload right now, and we have the capacity to expand to more families. So we real, we're really very proud of our staff and the hard work that they do. We have staff located in Tuolumne and Alpine and, I'm sorry, Amador and Calaveras. We, we visit Alpine once a month, but a bulk of our caseload is here in these three counties, and we're really proud of the work we do, and we are hoping that we become more of a household name. We have commercials that we're airing on the local channels, we're on the buses, like I said, we're on the backstops, we're on the radio, and we're trying to expand that. So with your help, we can do that. We want your constituents and the community to understand that we're here to help. If they're not sure how to do it, they can contact us in any way that makes it comfortable for them. We can be reached on our website, CSCSA.org, where they can find a load of information, they can apply for services directly there, or contact us by email, and walk into any of our offices at any time. So again, I appreciate your time, and we're hoping that we can get the word out, not just in August, but every month of the year. And with that, I will turn it back over to you.
You have nothing to say?
I do, I would like to thank you all for your continued, I would like to thank you all for your continued support. I know we meet with you on a quarterly basis, and it's really important to us to know that we do have your support out in the community because it does help with what we do in helping the families.
And I'll add, Supervisor Toffenelli has been on our board for many years. We appreciate your leadership and support. I know that I can pick up the phone and call you at any time. And Supervisor Huberty, you've jumped right in, and being our vice chair already makes us very proud to work with you, and we're very grateful for you.
It's nice to see you in person and not on Zoom.
Yes, it's funny, yes, nice to meet you.
Been doing Zoom for a long time.
Long time.
So is there any other public comment? Any comment online?
There is not.
Yeah, I'll bring it back to the board.
I will move this item.
Give me a second.
Go ahead, go ahead if you want, Martin.
I'll, thank you, I'll second. Thank you. All in favor?
No, we have to call for a roll call.
Sorry, roll call.
Chair Toffenelli?
Aye.
Supervisor Huberty?
Aye.
Supervisor Garmendi?
Aye.
Supervisor Follendorf?
Aye.
Supervisor Stapper?
Aye.
Thank you.
Now therefore, be it resolved in order.
Turn your microphone on, please. It's lunchtime. Now therefore, be it resolved in order that the Board of Supervisors, County of Calaveras, State of California, does hereby designate the month of August 2023 to be declared Child Support Awareness Month in Calaveras County, and applauds the Central Sierra Child Support Agency for its continued service to the families throughout our community.
Thank you so much for your time. Thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
Julie, Julie.
Oh, I knew you had it ready. Sometimes they mail it to us.
All right, I have 10 minutes after 12, and we're going to take a lunch recess at this time, and we will go till 1:30. Sound good? So we will reconvene at 1:30, okay?
Thank you. All in favor?
No, we have to call for a roll call.
Sorry, roll call.
Chair Toffenelli.
Aye.
Supervisor Hubbard.
Aye.
Supervisor Garimendi.
Aye.
Supervisor Follendorf. Supervisor Stopper.
Aye.
Thank you.
Now therefore, be it resolved in order-
Turn your microphone off.
It's lunchtime. Now therefore, be it resolved in order that the Board of Supervisors, County of Calaveras, State of California, does hereby designate the month of August 2023 to be declared Child Support Awareness Month in Calaveras County and applauds the Central Sierra Child Support Agency for its continued service to the families throughout our community.
Thank you so much for your time. Thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
Julie, Julie.
Oh, I knew you had it ready. Sometimes they mail it to us.
All right, I have 10 minutes after 12. We're going to take a lunch recess at this time and we will go till 1:30. Is that good? So we will reconvene at 1:30, okay? All right, we are back for the afternoon session of our regular board meeting of August 22nd, 2023. Our next item on agenda is item number 20. I am being told it's been pulled for a later date unless the board wants to move forward with it. I will pull the board, starting with Supervisor Stopper. Do you want to move forward with this item?
I'm more than willing to consider this item and just have some questions put forward in the future.
So Amanda?
I'll go with the majority of the board.
Okay, so we have a poll and we have a majority of the board who wishes to move forward on it. Corey, do you wish to take up the item?
Good afternoon, Chair members of the board, Corey Allen, Health and Human Services Agency. Today, we anticipated a presentation from the Amador-Toolumne Community Action Agency, Joe Boers, in regards to the programming that's done for and by Calaveras residents. Not by Calaveras residents, but for our community. We have a community action agency here in Calaveras and it's known as Calaveras-Mariposa Community Action. And so, you know, of course, we've been spending the last couple of years trying to understand why some programming is being conducted by ATCA, which is the acronym for Amador-Toolumne. Mr. Boers did submit a presentation that went through a number of services and programs that they've been doing for Calaveras County for some time. They came into being 10 years before the community action here in Calaveras. And so they've had opportunity to build their infrastructure and their program away. They wanted to go through a number of different programs that they do, including Food Bank that's run there in Toolumne and Amador. But the key programming that Calaveras is curious about is the energy and weatherization and water. So there's something known as LiHEAP, which has to do with energy for those in need, and LiWAP, and that is a program that has to do with water supports. Part of LiHEAP includes a program known as SWEATS. SWEATS is a program that helps individuals in distress to manage heating and air within their home, and there are certain circumstances that allow the Community Action Agency to activate that program. I'm going to go through and not go through some of the programming that hasn't been of question by our county, including tax support and lifeline medical alert. Those are things that we can certainly work on outside of this board arena. Housing programs also are supported through ATCA mainly because they manage and administer the continuum of care, or the COC, for the region. And so they have staff that are dedicated to making sure that the database is active and working and functioning, and they do their point-in-time count for homeless. And then some of the dollars that come down, state or federal dollars, they will administer and distribute to counties and to entities. So there is a bit of a housing component, not of question in this conversation. ATCA reports that they served in 2022 250 homes under the 2016 Water Energy Grant. This is not a grant that normally our Community Action Agency would manage. Our Community Action manages Community Services Block Grant dollars. And our JPA really holds us to only managing those dollars. We spent the last two years working on updating that JPA in order to be able to braid these additional fundings, things that might come down through propositions like this one I've mentioned, Prop 84 Water Conservation, Prop 1 Water Conservation and Well Water Testing. So ATCA does conduct and complete these programs for Calaveras, but they're also doing that with Mariposa, I'm sorry, not Mariposa, Amador and Toolumne. They're stationed in Amador and Toolumne. The SWEATS program is of really important note because when we've had federal disasters like we did this New Year's Eve, we opened up a full shelter operation. Two weeks in, we had an individual that the Office of Emergency Services beautifully supported by getting them into a hotel they could not, based on the red tagging on their home, access their home. We reached out to ATCA and ATCA responded and did provide support. And that's when I learned there's this program called SWEATS. And then now, of course, every time we have a disaster, I'll get, yes? Okay.
How did they provide that service, through SWEATS? Because I have emails that say different than that.
Oh, you know what? I would love to hear those as we talk through this. This is one example, yeah. One example were an individual that our housing manager was working around the shelter time. So we were 16 days in on this federal disaster with the mudslides and the flooding. And we did, the frustration that we're facing is that we didn't just have someone reach out and say, hey, we have a service, it's called SWEATS. Or hey, we have a service, it's called LiHEAP. My staff has been outreach and calling and asking, can we please have this service? And learning about what the service is in real time. So that's one of the examples that Joe had in his presentation around supporting someone through the SWEATS program. We are currently, or just wrapped up, August 14th to 20, we had a heat issue. That is where the state activates the SWEATS program. My staff has reached out and asked, can we please have some information? And three days after the event started, we got a flyer, we were able to push it out, and now that event has extended. So what I want to express to you is that it really takes a lot of energy to try to get some of these services in Calaveras County. And we desire to partner and we desire to do good work together. I'm just at this stage interested in identifying ways where we can have these services brought locally so that we can braid them right out the gate with our Office of Emergency Services response, our disaster response that we do through Health and Human Services and through our community partners. I know that Mr. Boers has indicated that he maximizes all of the spending that's allocated to Calaveras in the LiHEAP program. That's the energy program. What I don't know is in that budgeting, when you have multiple counties, how much money is able to be shifted from county to county or program to program? It's very difficult to really sit down into that detail. If Calaveras County ran its own LiHEAP and SWEATS program, it would be 100% Calaveras residents served in real time. With that, I just want to let you know, I have Stacy Johnston, who is your executive director of the Community Action Agency here in Calaveras, on the line, as well as Lucy, her consultant that works with her. And I believe there's some members of CSD also listening in to today's conversation. And I'm happy to answer any questions, but before I do, if you don't mind, I do want to wrap with some thoughts. We have one goal.
Now you have one second, this is the answer. Now you're saying LiHEAP and SWEAT, can you spell those for me, please? It's, I'm not understanding what one's-
Absolutely, and thank you for calling that out. L-I-H-E-A-P, all capitals. And SWEATS is S like Sam, W-E-A-T-S like Sam.
Great, thank you. I thought so, but I just wanted to make sure, thank you very much.
So important to know. So the one goal is that we excel in meeting the needs of Calaveras County residents. Is that occurring now? When I look through and see how much energy we are spending to try and access information and access materials that will distribute to our community so they know we have these programs, we have people who don't know that the programs exist. Can we increase our outreach? Absolutely. We are not funded through LiHEAP. We have a funded entity. And I believe that we can further the work. We do not currently have an MOU or an agreement, which means we don't have any ability to gather data, see if our outcomes are met. There's no logic model that says this is what we're going to do and this is what's going to come from that. Zero accountability to Calaveras County's board and to their residents. Accessing the SWEATS program and LiHEAP has been challenging and is not always timely. That example at New Year's Eve, we were 16 days in and the response that we got when we asked if we can activate SWEATS was, we don't typically do this for two to three days of rain. We had entire areas of Valley Springs and Angels Camp that were flooded out. Outreach is subpar. This morning before our board meeting, I reached out to the Resource Connection. They were identified in the LiHEAP plan that ATCA submits as this representative that distributes up to 500 notifications to people, so that 500-plus people are notified of these programs. I asked them, have you been receiving the outreach materials? And they said, that's funny, we just got some. And I said, is this the first time? And they said, since prior to COVID-19, this is the first outreach that we've had. So in the state plan, we're being told that all this outreach is happening, but realistically, they're depending on Stacy Johnston, CMCA members, and myself to do the outreach on the program that's being conducted and paid for out of ATCA. I've talked to you about the JPA and how we will need to make some minor adjustments. They're already in the language, it's just now with the State of California for final review, and that will allow us to absorb other funding streams in addition to CSBG. Mariposa County manages their own LiHEAP in-house. We've been in consultation with Amy from that county. She's telling us that it is doable. So I just really want you to know that. And last but not least, I did speak to David Scribner. He is the director of CSD or the Community Services Department. He indicated to me two years ago, because we started this conversation sometime back, right? He indicated to me, I'm sorry, it was one year ago that I spoke to him, ATCA would have to give up the program or fail to meet the obligations of the program in order for us to receive those funds. And so with that, I know that you've got other people that might want to speak on this.
Supervisor Stopper, you have questions, comments?
Well, it's key that the things you thought about SWEATS, because in the end, you brought up the fact that, you know, generally we don't do this for three-day rain, more so, they said, for fires. And at the same time, Mariposa, who has brought it out from an outside agency in the past because they were dealing with the same type of things, was contacted at that time and they said, it's a one-page thing, we've already filled it out and we're approved by the state within half an hour for this very same torrential downpours in a different part of the state. So, you know, one agency was able to provide it for themselves. We were pretty much given a stone wall from what I've seen on the, that in exchange on the emails, when it comes to SWEATS and being able to help facilitate people through these flood stages and having a place to stay. So that causes concern and that was something very forward from my eyes that is not being provided in a timely manner to, and I think we could facilitate it much easier ourselves, you know, and make sure our residents get what they need. You talked about, I've looked at the numbers, I've gone through this, and it's like, you know, the amount of funding could be buried in employees. I mean, they talk about how many employees they have, you know? How much of that money has actually helped residents of Calaveras County? You know, for the most part, residents of Calaveras County don't know who or what ATCA is and what services that they can get. I've talked to one person recently, it actually happened to be on the other side of the phone with me when you called the other day, and they're like, I received something from ATCA. Only reason they knew about it is because they originally came from Amador County and the person had family that actually worked for ATCA back in the past, so that, you know, it was apparent to me. So I have concerns. I want to make sure we meet the needs of our Calaveras County residents first and foremost. And I, and from my perspective, unless something's provided, I don't see that coming from ATCA at this time. And I'm not even sure that, you know, because CMCA is Calaveras and Mariposa, Mariposa's already able to facilitate their own. I'm not sure if that's going to be, you know, the vessel in which it would ride in Calaveras County, because we could facilitate our own through Health and Human Services and, you know, an employee, but also at the same time, CMCA is another option. I'm just throwing that out there. I did, you know, when you first started looking into this, I brought up to you when I was on CMCA a couple of years ago, and we were beating the drum about them. Took us quite a while to get a response, and I still have yet to see a contract between the state and ATCA that facilitates this agreement. The state doesn't know where it is, ATCA has not provided it, and I would like to see that it's a public document, and if it's not there, then what's our problem in being able to facilitate these needs as Calaveras is on their own? I think we should look into this more deeply, or, you know, easiest thing is for ATCA to become a good partner and let us know how they are able to provide these services.
Supervisor Garimendi, you're up.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And Ben, I appreciate your comments and I agree with you on what you're talking about. You know, I'm sorry that Joe Boers didn't have the time to attend our board meeting. I guess it's a function of time available for Calaveras County. It would have been nice to have him here to show us, since most of us aren't very familiar with ATCA. So as I understand it from your statement, we don't have an agreement, this board doesn't have an agreement with ATCA?
The only agreement that Health and Human Services has with ATCA is in relation to the housing and the continuum of care because we are a subrecipient to federal dollars that routes through their housing COC or the regional COC.
So are these other programs that we don't have an agreement on? They are obviously using our population and our name to help bolster their grant applications. We don't know exactly what comes back to us despite the fact that we are part of these.
Correct.
And they don't have any authority to represent us before these agencies. So I don't want to accuse anybody of fraudulent dealings, but what am I supposed to think? If somebody's using our name and our population to go out and get money and not reporting on our behalf? I think that would be something I'd really like Mr. Boers to answer for us. What authority does he have to represent this county? Second issue is, it's kind of redundant, as Supervisor Stopper put out, to have ATCA and CMCCA, our own Community Action Agency overlapping. I mean, why would we be part of the Amador-Toolumne Action Agency when we have an action agency if it wasn't? I don't understand that. So, you know, I have a lot of questions that I don't think you're able to answer because you work for us and they're separate. But I would like to, you know, we could discuss as a board when we get further discussion, whether we should continue this program at all. I mean, there's no board action taken to make it into existence. Do we need a board action to terminate it?
My concern is that those funds go directly to ATCA for LiHEAP and SWEATS programming and LiWAP, which is the water program, because they were identified before we came into an existence as the person that would provide for Calaveras County. No one can find the agreement, no one can find any documents from the state on down, but that money earmarked for Calaveras is going to ATCA. And we need to find a way, find a way where we can redirect that if we wanted to come to Calaveras.
Maybe when we get down to further discussion, we could entertain some sort of polling around that, see what the board is. Thank you.
Supervisor Hubbard?
I was just going to say that at the last CFCA meeting with Supervisor Follendorf too, Supervisor Follendorf was pretty heated about saying that we were unaware of anything that ATCA was doing. I was wondering if Stacy's on the line and could report to that meeting.
Yes, yes.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Hi Stacy.
Yes.
There you go, sorry. Good afternoon, Madam CEO, Honorable Chair, respected board members and county council. I'm joining you from Georgia. I'm at the National Conference for Community Action, so I'm here to help answer any questions I can. to help answer any questions I can.
I suppose my first question is if you could address the contract, if you know of anything that's ever been in writing.
So, as Corey stated earlier, about two years ago, I began this journey of exploration about the services that the Amador-Tualami Community Action Agency provided on behalf of Calaveras County. And it started because we actually had a service provider that was looking for a generator to help provide some assistance to an elderly individual needing some electricity. And I found out through that time, I reached out to our consultant, Lucy Fernandez, to see if our community action agency could provide this to, the service to this individual, found out then about ATCA holding the energy assistance side of services for Calaveras County and that we could not provide this because it would be supplanting of funds. And so, we began the journey and I reached out to the state, I reached out to Mr. Boers first. I believe it was September of 2021, I reached out to Mr. Boers, asked about, I wanted to know numbers, just basic numbers of services to Calaveras County residents, and then I began asking for a copy of an annual U, a formal agreement or a contract that gave the authority to ATCA from the state or from Calaveras County to provide these services on our behalf. Mr. Boers could not produce anything, and then I met with the state and asked, and they could not provide anything either. They did provide a copy of the annual contract in which any provider receives. So, CMCAA on an annual basis, we received a contract package from the state, that's what they provided, not the formation document that gave them the authority 40 years ago. That still has not been produced. I've had conversations and the state has referenced it being somewhere archived, someplace, but still that document has not been produced, which causes concern on several levels. Mr. Boers did come in with his staff on that meeting of July 26th and provided a presentation to our board, and I feel that coming out of that meeting, we had even more questions and more concerns, and so they feel like that's where we are today.
Stacy, could I ask, what do you see as the way forward? How can we affect change?
Supervisors, everybody, in my heart and from, you know, every fiber of my being, this is about advocacy for Calaveras County. And I'm going to get emotional, because it's been a two-year journey in just trying to gain information or provide resources to residents in times of need that need these services, and it shouldn't be this difficult to access them. We shouldn't feel like we are asking for anything special when these services are allocated and funding that is allocated specifically for Calaveras County residents. I don't know what the process is on a state level, but what I do know is that we will need your support, the Board of Supervisors, to lead this, fulfill this conversation with the state in an effort to bring these services back to Calaveras County. I will agree with Corey again in that Calaveras County can serve Calaveras County residents better. We have the wraparound services already in place, we can immediately respond to needs when a situation arises such as a flooding, such as a fire. You know, we're talking about this program SWEATS, and it is severe weather emergency and transportation services. So SWEATS is implemented in times of emergency and disaster. And we don't know how long this program has been available to Calaveras County residents, we've only heard about it recently in January, and from what I'm getting from the state, it's a program that has been in existence for many, many years. And so, there are things that, it brings tears to my eyes, because we all know somebody that could have benefited from some of these services, and so I would be happy to get back to you with the process, and maybe Corey and I can work together in identifying how that process works through the state in order to bring these programs back.
Thank you, Stacy.
Amanda, you have any comments?
Well, yeah, to Martin, I was pretty heated at that, that board meeting a couple weeks ago. And a lot of the points were then addressed and I echoed them. What's just really disappointing is the accusations that were made by the agency to our own county staff, who were trying to get the most information through the board to allow us to make the best decision for our residents, and also accountability. We have no, no idea how much money is actually allocated and to then, I believe it was then that, you know, is that really going to admin or is it really going to the individuals that, that should be saved? Over the last couple of weeks, I did send this data to Corey, and I believe Stacy had it too, which really shocked me, the county's not in the position to be providing these services, given that we have other agencies that provide them. But I did reach out to the city, because I remember when I was on the city council, we voted to start providing services for COVID new residents, because we, either city council, had no idea these services were available. And we saw and weaved with city residents, and at the time, being part of a utility provider, we wanted to stop that. So, there was a vote, COVID happened, a lot of that, you know, as everyone knows mandates not to charge all those things, but the city just recently took a look at that, seeing that there was a need, and I'm using city population, not county, because that's the only data I can see to find, because the agency won't provide it to our staff. The city currently provides out of their own funding, which I believe is the latest part of it, they provide help to 28 customers receiving water assistance, and their cap is 83 people, so the population, they're just under $25,000. In addition, they provide another 27 customers receiving fuel assistance with their cap at that of 56 residents who could, with the same amount, just under $25,000. So the city is putting up over $40,000 with their own funding to provide their residents services, that we should be able to get their, for the CD, CD program. And it really disheartened me to find out that because of the lack of support that they're getting, just us and general, county, it doesn't matter, Calaveras County residents are not getting, they're finding other ways to get people the money so they can keep the utility bill on, and that is wrong, that we are not getting to the max extent of services we should be getting. And I am so happy that our community leaders are taking a look on themselves, just by asking and doing these things. And I hope that staff, as we go through this, we can find ways, because this is just another part to what Stacy's saying, of we can do it better, because we're already, you know, we don't, we're already having to go out, because we're struggling to get these services through our constituents. And I'm really, really, as Martin, I was pretty heated about it, because this is just wrong, it's wrong, and there's no accountability, we don't know our own debt, and I, we still haven't got the data. I think that that last board meeting, Stacy or Corey correcting along, we requested data, and we still haven't received those data of the demographic of the 1,500 customers that are supposedly being insured in this program, whether that population is a Calaveras and a big part of that data and the difference. I still haven't seen it and it's been a month. So it's more than just whether it helps, we're getting their services, it's the accountability and this board has no idea what, how, where that money's going, and that's a problem. And Ben, thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Ben, your light's still on, and you have more comments?
Just to follow up on what Amanda says, and thank you Amanda, I mean, really on point, and you made a lot of sense there to us, I mean, with some, some real-time numbers. You know, the energy program performance that piece that they have here, it says the following table represents only Calaveras County services over the last four-plus years. How many plus on four? I mean, and where, how were those monies actually, how much of them hit the ground? Because they say 100% complete, they spent 100% of the money, how much actually touched the people? Those are, those are real questions that need to be answered from my position.
Yeah, I agree, and Amanda, you're spot on, thank you for articulating it so clearly. I mean, Gary, we're just doing budget, and one of your priorities was how we help out people who are getting hurt, so it really burns my toes to find out that we're looking at pulling out a general fund, same way City of Angels did, and there's already a program for our people, that, that's, that's no bueno.
I agree. And I gotta say, I'm thrilled that we have a camera board as active as we do now. I'm telling you, years ago, almost two decades ago, when I was on camera, and I don't think anybody's around, left from them, at one point, we were going to turn our community acting agency over to ATCA, because we just didn't have the ability to do anything with what was, and all we were doing was getting state and federal funds and giving them to certain agencies. That's all we were doing. DRAIL was one, and I don't remember all of them, but there was like five of them, every year we'd meet and we'd just give that money out. So, I'm not saying, and I agree with everybody here, that yes, that money, we should be getting the money, we should be distributing that money, but I don't, I can't tell you what, how it evolved into what it is now, and what was turned over to ATCA, because there was some programs that we had ATCA doing for us back in the day, and maybe some of this evolved into it, and now we have such a good board and an active board, it's catching up to them and catching up to us, saying, hey, wait a minute, no, we need to administrate that. And I think that's great, I think that's exactly what needs to be done. I don't know if they can produce any documents that's necessary, I don't know how the state is giving them the money, our money, without any documents saying that, you know, we agree to that. I don't know if they exist, I tried to remember while I was sitting here, I don't remember ever doing that, although I know there was a couple of programs that we did have under them, and again, at one time, we were in discussions with them of just completely turning over the complete community action process to them, but we didn't do it, we hung on to it, I'm so happy that we did, because we've got an outstanding board right now, it's awesome. So, go get them, guys. So, with that, is there any public comments? Is there any public comments online?
There is not.
No? Well, Corey, thank you so much for stepping in and putting on that presentation, and good job.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
Yes, Stacy, thank you for taking on the job and getting emotional about it and leading this group of people, and for Calaveras. I can't, I don't know, because nothing's brought up about Mariposa, but I assume the same thing is happening in Mariposa with these funds that are earmarked for them, because it's all through us, Camera, and so, I'm not sure, but anyway, thank you.
Mr. Chair, before we wrap up the site, this is informational, it does give us an opportunity to provide direction for staff.
It does.
If we wanted to. I'd be willing to make a recommendation, but I want to like to know where everybody else is, is this something we want to do today? I was going to suggest, see what the interest was on finally asking, directing staff to figure out how to unwind and bring this back home. Obviously, we don't even know what all the moving parts are, but I can't know where the board was.
I would, I would be in agreement with that, and I think maybe a formal letter to ATCA from admin or from Calaveras, asking them to present any documentations they have, and how we got to where they're taking over this money and not even showing us how it's being administered and where it's been administered at, at least send a formal letter to them and start the process.
And start the process. That would be.
Yes.
I have a comment.
Yes, yes.
When that formal letter goes out, I think we need to include their board members, because I think that's been one of the triangles for staff, if they're trying to work through the chain of the staff, ASF, and so this is now a board, I think it needs to go to the board. If they don't go to the executive director, this is the Calaveras County Board through the ASF Board to do the things. I don't know, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I think we need to elevate this, because staff have been working so hard trying to do this at their level, it needs just one step to who that letter gets addressed to.
And I think it's important to put on the record that Mr. Boers was here all morning, but didn't have the time to stick around this afternoon to talk to us. Maybe their boards know that, too.
I would support what Amanda just proposed, and that would be the first step forward on us figuring out which direction to go, or even, you know, best-case scenario, ATCA's coming, coming out and giving us a different plan on how they provide services, so we can all move forward together as partners.
Could I ask, would it be possible to actually go to the state as well and see from the, do a double-pronged attack here, I'm not an attack, but to figure out how the state administers that, those funds?
I think we do that, but I think maybe we should get a response from ATCA first and see what their response is, and then go to the state, that would be my opinion. Teresa, you have an opinion on that?
So, our office would be happy to draft a letter. I do believe that Supervisor Follendorf has a great suggestion that it should be from our board, Calaveras, to the ATCA board, which includes board members from both Tualami and Amador, so that...
So, can we have that drafted and presented to us for our approval at the next board meeting?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Would you really favor that?
Yes.
Okay, is that it? All right, thank you, Corey.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the next item, this is item number 22, it's an informational item from the administrative office, this is to receive a strategic plan update presentation from Jamie. Good afternoon, Jamie.
Good afternoon, Chair and Board. Share my screen. The countywide strategic plan was adopted by the Board of Supervisors in December of 2022, and it is a living document that establishes framework for decision-making for many years. Calaveras County's three-year strategic plan provides context to inform policies and projects that are prioritized for the next three years. The plan guides how we align short and long-term objectives with operations and budgets, so our actions reflect a clear sense of purpose and demonstrates meaningful progress. The administration office has met with every department mentioned in the strategic plan back in April. The goal of those meetings was to determine a revised target date for action items if the original date was not attainable, identify the next steps in completing the larger action items, assign target dates to the next step in those items, and receive updates from those departments. At the beginning of August, the administrative office asked department heads to provide an additional update to the strategic plan. The administration office is dedicated to continue working with department heads to ensure that this plan is a living document. Part of the strategic plan was to develop the mission, vision, and values, I just wanted to touch on those briefly. I just wanted to touch on those briefly. A mission is a formal summary that aims, um, and values, aims at the values of an organization. Our mission is to serve, support and strengthen our communities. A vision describes the organization's purpose, what it's striving for and what it wants to achieve. And our vision is a prosperous rural environment with unlimited opportunities. Values represent the core belief that an organization wishes to foster through its actions in pursuit of its mission. Values shape the county's culture and inform the priorities and strategies we choose. Our values are integrity, service, people and sense of community. The next step in creating the strategic plan was to create stra- strategic focus areas and objectives. We have five strategic focus areas, which identify the most important priorities that the board and county, um, deemed for the next three years. Each strategic focus area is supported by multiple objectives and then action items. The five strategic focus areas are safe and healthy communities, a balanced economy, workforce excellence, resource stewardship and infrastructure. And then underneath all of those are the objectives that were identified for each of those strategic focus areas. We will start with safe and healthy communities. So this is going to be a very high level. Um, we didn't touch on every single objective or every single action item. We kind of took some of the high, um, high priorities or ones that had the most updates. Um, and feel free to ask questions after I go through them. Um, so the first is safe and healthy communities. So one of the first ones was enhance emergency preparedness for residents and visitors. Some of those action items included provide an emergency alert system update to the board and evaluate NIMS and SIMS countywide compliance for county employees and develop an information, implementation plan. For the emergency alert system, Genesis, previously known as Zone Haven, has been implemented and training from Genesis occurred in June of 2023. Deputies with the sheriff's office have been assigned maps and map books to correspond with the mapping zones. For the NIMS and SIMS training, he, health and, or I'm sorry, human resources and OES are working together to create a list of employees that have come, not completed the training as well as those that have. And they are targeting three different ways to provide those training to our employees that have not received that training. Um, those three ways would include an in-person training option, an online training option, and then a hybrid with a mix of both in-person and online. The next objective would be increased recreational opportunities. One of the action items under that was to hold a study session for the board to consider increasing and organizing recreational programming for all residents and visitors. Um, our economic development director provided a study session to the board in May regarding the parks and recreation. The next objective, improve the health and wellbeing of our communities. One of those action items was to evaluate available resources, community partners and funding opportunities for camp, for the county wellbeing activities and present fun, findings and recommendations to the board. Child welfare is working through the Family Wellness Coalition and Comprehensive Prevention Plan to survey existing community-based organizations for capacity to deliver supportive programs. The community has been surveyed and the areas of focus are increased availability of childcare, substance abuse, abuse and mental health treatment options and access to affordable housing. Some of the survey results were delivered to the board during the State of Families presentation back in April. The Comprehensive Prevention Plan has been submitted to the state for approval. Programs including home visiting, parents as teachers and home builder, a mental health workaround program, are being reviewed for sustainability. Additionally, the development of a family resource center is in its initial planning stages with the partnering agencies such as the Office of Ed, probation, behavioral health, VMRC and child welfare. Adult Services is working on programs to target social isolation, isolation and access to services, which include the technology grant and the coordinated care outreach team compromise of adult services, social workers that works in the community to help seniors and disabled adults. The next objective, increase personal safety for water recreation. The action item, collaborate to develop an education and communication plan for schools. The sheriff's office provides public outreach to school-aged children, teaching them about life jacket safety, swimming safety and personal safety such as impacts of heat, sun and PPE. HSA, Public Health Division, in collaboration with the county sheriff's office, has successfully provided a series of events aimed at increasing personal safety for water recreation enthusiasts. Life jackets were fitted to each participant's size and summer safety kits containing sunscreen, bug spray, SPF lip balm and aloe vera gel were provided. Along with the summer safety kits, education around the efforts of heat and sun exposure was provided. Some of those, um, achievements include at the first event in South Shore, Comanche, um, a hundred and three life vests were distributed and a hundred and fifty summer safety kits were distributed. At the second event in Hogan, forty-one life jackets were, um, distributed and fifty summer kits were given out. The next action item was to partner with contracted agencies to increase water safety messaging at the recreation areas. The sheriff's office has collaborated with the Army Corps of Engineers at Lake Hogan, the Bureau of Reclamation at New Lurones and East Bay Med at Comanche, educating on safety laws for consistent enforcement and education of the public. This sheriff PIO increased regular social media releases on water topics. The next objective was code compliance update. Part of the act, or one of the action items under that objective was review, update appropriate county ordinances for consideration by the board. Building code compliance received direction from the board in May twenty, on May twenty-third. Draft procedures for voluntary abatement and citation extensions are completed and pending council review. Draft changes to the ordinance eight dot zero six are complete and pending council review as well. The next action item, develop best practices to increase interdepartmental coordination. Building held interdepartmental track it training and commence implementation and improved plan review routing with planning and public works departments, environmental health.
That's the end?
No. I wish, no, I'm just kidding. It's actually a real, it's a lot of good stuff here. Um, next is enhance education and outreach for residents and businesses. Public handouts have been developed for code updates and are available on the website. Out-of-date handouts have been removed from the website. Occupancy inspection checklist for new businesses have been completed for distribution. In addition, guidance for scheduling and managing building inspections online is complete. Oh, again?
Oh, I thought you knew you wasn't up there. Thought you were just, she didn't get back up after you lost the first time. Thanks, Jack.
Thank you.
I thought she knew it wasn't up there.
There you go. Okay. So the next objective is enhance countywide fire prevention programs. The first, um, action item, develop educational training documents to accompany the business license program. New public handouts for all aspects of the fire prevention program are being completed and drafts are ninety percent complete. The next action item, establish a joint powers authority or MOU between the county and fire districts, enhancing collaboration and efficiency for building and planning activities. We can now move this item to complete because your board approved that in today's meeting. The next is conduct annual public enrollment programs for emergency notification systems. OES has conducted outreach at local assistance center and disaster recovery centers, as well as had several town halls throughout the county. Our next objective, enhance our community neighborhood watch program. First, um, action item, building strong community and governmental partnerships. The sheriff's office is holding regular town hall and community meetings in all areas of the county. Additional meetings are scheduled as requested. Um, next action item, further take advantage of technology to enhance safety. The sheriff is utilizing crime analysis and sharing of statistics for patrol development and communication with community groups. Continued evaluation of a new crime tracking software and other technological advancements is underway. The next action item, promote expansion of neighborhood watch groups. Deputies and sheriff volunteers hold regular neighborhood watch group meetings with existing groups and speak to new members. Promotion of the program expansion is underway to establish new groups, um, and ties into the town halls listed above. Next action item is enhance the use of social media platforms for information sharing. The sheriff's office has expanded their social media platforms and increased public, their public alerts campaign. Implementation underway for utilization of QR codes for quick dissemination of appropriate info routed to citizens more easily. Oh, there's one more under safe and healthy communities. Um, reduce homelessness. So this action item enhance a rap, enhance wraparound services for the homeless population. Behavioral health bridge housing grants successfully secured, um, which will create and build on the wraparound services and case management services to stabilize those in supportive housing, as well as create additional avenues, um, to supportive housing. So our next strategic focus area was a balanced economy. The first objective, um, is a balanced support of services and planning for our residents and visitors. The action item is capitalize and promote activities related to recreation tourism by developing a comprehensive approach and dedicated human resources. Parks and Recreation Study Session held in May of 2023, the board gave direction for a Parks and Rec master plan that our RFP went out and closed in August. Um, our next step is to final, the finalize the proposal scoring and enter into contract negotiations with a contract coming back to the Board of Supervisors. The next one is increase small businesses, business opportunities into press industries. That action item, through development of a marketing plan, promote manufacturing in regions with existing resources. Um, you received a presentation on the 2023 through 2028 Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy SEDs, um, in August, and the next step would be to, um, adopt those SEDs. The next one is attract additional businesses to Calaveras County. Streamline permitting processes for business. We held an interpar- or building held an interdepartmental track it training and commenced its implementation of improved plan review routing with planning and public works, environmental health and, um, onsite wastewater coordination to begin in September. The last one, protect and enhance local discretionary revenues. Um, the action item is to hold a revenue workshop for the board to item, identify types and trends of general fund discretionary revenue. That revenue workshop is scheduled for November 2023. Workforce excellence. The first one is invest in employee training and development. One of the action items is to create an annual department head workshop focused on organizational success, priorities and efficiencies. Human Resources is currently working on scheduling a lean six sigma training for our department heads. The next action item, complete due diligence and implement an employee evaluation system. HR has rolled out NeoGov forms and is currently rolling out, um, performance system, which will be going on through September. Next one is incorporate best practices for employee recruitment and retention. Review and determine best practices for the classification, review and compensation. The county entered into a contract with Evergreen Solutions in July for a classification and compensation study. Work started in August and should be completed by the end of January in 2024. The next objective, career development for employees and organizational succession planning. For the board to consider, create and provide resources for in-house training and development opportunities such as leadership, supervisory and general programs for all employees. HR is developing an internal mentorship program through the NeoGov onboarding. Um, they're providing leadership training for all department heads. Um, and they will start back up with the supervisor management training, um, or they did start that back in April. The next, um, the next thing is exciting because it's actually completed items. So the first completed item under workforce excellence is to engage in development of Calaveras County Governance Manual. The Calaveras County Board of Supervisors, interim CAO and county council participated in three days of workshops with BK Consult to develop the now completed Calaveras County Governance Handbook and companion self-assessment tool. The handbook outlines practices intended to build trust and sustain positive board relationships and define a cul- a culture of quality, equity and respect. By embracing the principles and practices contained in the Governance Handbook, the Board of Supervisor hopes to enable the county's governance team to create a climate for excellence through the Calaveras County organization. The Board of Supervisors approved this Governance Handbook in November of 2022. The next item that's been completed is to consider development of enhancing internship programs with high schools and colleges. The county partnered with Motherlode Job Training to bring in high school students for a workforce development program during the summer. Animal Services, PATV and Human Resources each had a student during the summer. The program was extremely successful with each of the candidates being offered to extend their program through the school year so they wish and can fit into their schedules. Um, and the program will definitely be continued and come back next year with hopefully even more students and departments being able to utilize that. Resource stewardship. Water conservation and efficiency. The first action item, partner with local water and sewer agencies. Quarterly utilities coordination meetings happen through CCWD. The next action item, support special districts and associations in implementing and advocating for water conservation measures. Environmental Health has posted a link to the California Water Board's State Water Resource Control Board Water Conservation Portal for tips on water conservation. This collaborative effort will be ongoing and handouts will be available through EMA Department public, public front counters. The next action item, partner with local utilities to provide a report to the board on the countywide use of wells, onsite sewage disposal systems and public water utility usage. The planning department has reached out to CCWD and other local utility agencies and will coordinate with Environmental Health to provide a report on the county use of wells, onsite sewage disposal systems and public water usage. The next objective is to reduce fire hazards. First action item, increase recycling opportunities for bio-waste through diversion projects of green and wood waste. Integrated Waste Management coordinated with Caltrans to offer twelve California Clean Days events throughout the county to residents. These events curb illegal dumping, proving to be successful by disposing of thousands of tires, mattresses and appliance. These events are held at no cost to the county or the residents or the county. Integrated Waste Management will continue to work to recognize opportunities for partnerships and evaluate district-specific needs. It's a priority of Integrated Waste to identify how the division can best serve, collaborate and enhance efforts by considering logical solutions that would bring value and support to the strategic focus area. Integrated Waste is preparing to engage in a comprehensive federal grant process with the intent of implementing upgrades to the transfer stations that would support operational, um, fluidity and encourage recycling efforts by making facilities more convenient. The next action item, implement projects through the Good Neighbor Agreement with the U.S. Forest Service. We currently have two projects underway, both project forty-one with tree mortality and the McCay's Fuel Break. The next action item is identify additional funding through grants or other resources for local fire protection districts to mitigate fire risks such as fire breaks and further identification of evacuation routes. OES received a California Fire Safe Council grant, funding to update the 2019 adopted EOP plan, um, as well as add an evacuation annex. Um, and the update and annex should be completed by June of 2024. Um, the next objective, reduce visual blight. Um, the action item was to establish an annual budget for abatement of visual blight, identifying focus areas for blight reduction. Um, direction from the board and the May 2023, reduce scope of blight reduction. However, roll abatement grant is processing for the abatement of several outstanding cases, expecting fund availability and abatements to commence by the end of September. This one also has some completed action items. The first one being to review and improve building codes. Adopted 2022 building standards, including green building standards that mandate reduced flow fixtures, um, effective January first of 2023. The next is to provide a triage process for abatement priorities. And the update is triage process has been completed and implemented. Our next and last one is infrastructure. The first objective being capacity building for development. First action item, partnering with local utilities, prepare a report for the board that can identify existing infrastructure enhancement needs and needs for planned growth areas such as broadband and other utilities. Broadband presentation was given to the Board of Supervisors. Um, they continue quarterly meetings with sewer, water, um, utility providers and monthly housing partnership meetings. The next action item is to update the general plan housing element as required or needed. The housing element annual report was filed with the HCD on March thirty-first of 2023 and the report was presented to the board at their second meeting in April. Next action item is to identify pockets and areas of the community to dedicate to affordable housing. Housing and planning staff are actively working with the Housing Resource Partnership, HRP, committees, development and services with the consultant to identify solutions and funding. committees, development, and services with the consultant to identify solutions and funding opportunities. Last action item is to partner with other agencies for identifying infrastructure capacity and funding. The county applied for REAP, which was a $2.1 million grant back in December of 2022. This grant would encourage low-to-moderate residential development. Funding would cover water hookup and related fees and permits. We are still waiting to hear if we've received the funding and are hoping to hear by the end of the month. The next objective is to provide a safe, modern, and efficient workspace for the county offices. First action item is to complete a county-wide facilities evaluation targeting safety, disability, access, repairs, and efficiencies. Admin has requested a list of projects from department heads and has consolidated those requests, creating a five-year project plan to use as a budgeting, planning tool when considering uses of funding. This is a living document and can change from time to time. The next action item was to complete planned construction of the new animal shelter and district attorney building. The county contracted with Lionacis to create a programming and budget feasibility study for the district attorney and contracted with LDA to create plans for the animal shelter. The next step will be finalizing those plans and reports. We hope to bring those back to you in October. The last is to consider further investment in electronic data management. The Assessor Scanning Project is almost complete. The clerk recorder is currently working on a digitization project that would make all official records dating back to the 1850s searchable by the public in their office. So again, I provided a very high-level overview of not all, but the majority of the action items that are in the strategic plan. I have asked department heads to be available if you have any specific questions regarding any of their updates. So at this time, I welcome any questions or comments.
Thank you, Jamie. Thank you for your presentation. Any comments or questions from the board? Oh, yeah, thank you.
I have to get up to the department heads. I think, you know, we talked early on in the creation stages that this really needed to be a living document, and I think that the updates provided by the department heads prove that it is a living document and something that they are working on every day and taking into consideration. So they really are the ones that are doing all the work.
I'm just really happy that this isn't a document that we completed and sitting on a shelf somewhere. But you're working through it over and over again, and that's what it was about. Thank you.
I wanted to echo the same thing Jack said, in the fact that the years that I've been on the board, we've had these plans and it just goes away. Nothing ever done, but we are actually doing things, and that is fantastic. Thank you all department heads and admin for all your hard work in moving this thing forward and implementing it. It's just great. We're in a great place right now with it, so, yeah. And I want to, yeah, I want to ask a question. Is that your handwriting in each one of those?
I mean, maybe.
All right, is there any public comments? No public comments in the room? Are there any online?
None online.
Well, this is informational, and thank you again, Jamie. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to item number 23. This is an action item from Human Resources. It's approved of comparable agencies for the classification and compensation study. And this is Judy Hawkins.
Yes, good afternoon, Chair Toffinelli, members of the board. Judy Hawkins, Human Resources, and this director. So I'm bringing before you today one of the first items that we need to get to our contractor for them to move forward with the study that they're working on. And so this is a county-wide classification and compensation study that we are doing. It is not specific to any bargaining units. It covers all six bargaining units, elected officials, appointed department heads, and then those of us that fall under unrepresented. And so what we are bringing to you, the list that we're recommending, our contractor has given us 20 targets, target agencies, to bring to them. We don't have to do it for 20, but the more that we can have on the list, the better, because they try to make sure that each of our classifications that we have benchmarked have at least five comparables, and so that we have a better idea what the true salary comparison will be and total compensation. And so the list that we're providing you are the agencies out of our MOUs, neighboring agencies, or agencies that we, jurisdictions that we are losing employees to. And so it is up to the board on which ones they would like to approve. But like I said, the more agencies we have, the more accurate the data will be when it comes back. Also, some of our agencies that we're recommending are much larger. And so one of the nice things about the contractor that we are using, they will take that into consideration and appropriately weight that agency. So we're comparing a little bit more apples to apples. And to give you an example, for like those agencies that are surrounding us, I did a quick review of our addresses and where our employees are living. We're up to 22% of our employees are living outside of the county. When I first started, it was, I think, under 10%. And so we do have quite a few of our employees outside of the county. Right now, Valley Springs has a third of our employees. And so most, we have 190 employees in Valley Springs. And so overall, we have 62% of our employees, it's easy for them to commute to other areas, even with the price of gas. And so that's why it's important to include those agencies, such as Stanislaus San Joaquin, that we're recommending. So I would love to answer any questions that you have.
I have a question. How did Fresno end up on this list?
So that is a very good question, and it is in the SEIU MOU. And so we have included in the list all of the agencies that are in, the three MOUs that have agencies listed, and we have three MOUs that do not have comparable agencies listed.
Okay. Any other board questions, comments on any of these?
We did include some cities in here because we have lost quite a few. We have lost several employees to ION and Jackson. And so we have also included the cities that are closer by.
Up to 20. We have 18 here. Is that correct?
I think there's two on the back.
Oh.
I did the same thing earlier.
Jackson, I own her on the back.
You got me on that one, Judy.
Any other questions or comments? Open it to public comments. Is there any public comments on this item? Seeing none in the room. Are there any online?
None online.
We have none online. Well, I'll bring it back to the board. This is an action item. I'm open for a motion unless there's any other comments.
Just a general comment. You know, I think we have at least three MOUs that include different areas that will be included in this, as per the MOUs. Are all those, from all those different MOUs included in on this?
Yes.
Excellent. Then with that, I'm more than willing to put forward a motion based on this list of 20.
Motion by Supervisor Stoppa. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Supervisor Hubbard. All in favor? Oh, I gotta do a row call, sorry.
Supervisor Stoppa.
Aye.
Supervisor Hubbard.
Aye.
Supervisor Garamendi. Supervisor Follendorf.
Aye.
Chair Toffinelli.
Aye.
Thank you.
It passes 5-0. Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to the last item on our agenda, Supervisors' announcements. In compliance with Government Code 53232.3D, board members shall provide brief reports on any meetings attended at the expense of the local agency, and may make other announcements or report out. We'll start with Supervisor Hubbard.
Thank you, Chair. I attended the CCWD Town Hall a week ago last Monday, and seeing as three of us at least have been talking about our dogs this coming Saturday is National Dog Day, and I thought I should let everybody know.
Thank you. Supervisor Garamendi.
Lots of Golden State Connect Authority meetings. You guys got updated. Back and forth to Sacramento. Probably more than I'd like, but we're almost there.
Good job. Supervisor Follendorf.
Not going to record, everyone, just thanking you to the board for allowing me to join the meeting today remotely, and thanks to staff for coordinating the districts with the technical. I'm still currently up on the Smith River complex, which is across the Oregon border, and I will be here till probably about September 1st or September 15th. So I will see everyone in person at the next meeting.
All right, thank you. Supervisor Stoppa.
Sure.
Yes, I am. I was looking up here.
No, it's all good. It's all good. We went down the line like it was here. Let's see. Nothing to report beyond law and public comment this morning, and I'm interested to see how you're going to direct us and lead the way on how we're going to address these issues, Mr. Toffinelli.
Well, thank you so much, Supervisor Stoppa. And I have nothing to report at this time, so. CEO Theresa, do you have any comments?
I don't have anything to report, but I would like to thank my administrative team. As you can see, they've been doing quite a bit of work to make sure that our strategic plan is moving forward, and I couldn't be prouder of them. They're all phenomenal folks, so just wanted to make that comment.
Oh, one other thing. Supervisor Stoppa, one other thing.
I want to thank Stacy, our board clerk, for this wonderful vegetables that are on here. I should have done it earlier, and we should have put her online and put her on full flame. Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you, Stacy. Matty, yours would still be sitting here when you get here in two weeks. Thank you, Stacy. Thank you. Ms. County Council, no comments? Robin, from the Kirk's office, nothing? Oh, Susan, anything?
I have lovely new kittens.
That's great. And with that, we will stand at your, thank you.